Call regular council meeting to order at City Hall August 7th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Ray, would you be willing to provide the blessing of course this evening?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for the men that are serving on our council. We ask the Lord that you would give them wisdom as they debate the issues and make decisions that they need to make. In your precious Son's name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Ray. Were there any additions to the agenda?
I got one, which was executive session removed Friday. Nowhere is it in your job description to have anything removed.
Okay, that's fine, we could discuss that actually on a day-to-day basis.
We can't have executive sessions when it's baseball news.
Okay.
They're just telling you that...
Get to it, please.
You cannot remove them. If anybody can call at any time and add anything to the agenda...
Actually, we do not have to have an agenda even.
It has to be on there if we say work to be on there.
Are there any additions to the agenda?
Non-elected personnel.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Ten minutes to discuss personnel matters pertaining to non-elected personnel. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie Ford, one. Stand.
Ryan, what stance?
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Citizens' comments? Anybody wishing to address the council this evening?
Is that when I do my thing?
Yep.
Sure.
All right. You gave me till tonight. I don't know if anybody's gone by there, but the buildings are done. They're down. I have bought a plug for the sewer. And hopefully, we will... Our schedule right now, we're planning on plugging the sewer on the property. And our little sinkhole that has developed, we've got it covered up so it's safe. And when we plug that sewer, we're hopefully gonna be able to fill in that hole. And then it's time to stash cash again.
What's the concrete gonna be removed?
It depends. When I run the concrete for the new buildings, I will find out. Now, we broke up a lot of concrete by hand over the weekend. And I'm talking by hand, I'm talking a sledgehammer and manual labor. But when I get this tractor this weekend, we will see what we need to do. And really, we'll either be removing concrete, but that's what we're gonna be filling in that sinkhole with. That concrete that we have broken up and dirt. And then when I get my next building, I will have them come down and tell me if they're doing the concrete foundation and if I need to get rid of... Because the concrete that's there now is not broken up. It is one big form. And I may be able to add more to it or... But they will be able to tell me what I need to do.
Okay.
And if I need to get rid of, it'll be gone. And if I don't, I may just add to it.
Thoughts of council?
It looks really good. Like, yes, took care of it and cleaned it up and...
My opinion is...
Did you notice the flowers?
I guess not.
I saw something pop right up all over the floor.
Yes, overnight, after we removed the last tractor load. Yes. And to me, that's a sign from above. We're on the right track.
Very cool. Very cool. Any thoughts, Jim?
My own opinion is the job is not finished till the concrete's removed because you have a slab of concrete that runs over under and create another problem. And until that's done, in my opinion, it's not finished till the concrete's removed in the lots level.
That's right. And we're working on that.
John, I know you said we needed to have consensus to call the project or our part in this project complete if... But we don't... I don't know anyone else here, but I at least have a no, I believe.
If the council wants to say, keep at it... I mean, we don't need it. We don't need to keep it up. They don't want the council to say that we don't need a review date. That's just a consensus of the council. The minutes would just reflect that.
Thoughts?
As long as they continue to do the work that you're doing, I don't have a problem with you continuing and improving the lot. So, that's my opinion.
If you sneak me in on the agenda, somebody needs to...
We wouldn't ever sneak you in on the agenda. If they requested you to come, I would definitely get ahold of you. But there would never be any discussion about coming. That's not how it works.
Okay. That's all I care about, knowing when I need to be here. And I will be here.
Thoughts, council? No action? Review again in a certain amount of days? Call it complete? What do you want to do?
Time-wise, I...
It don't matter, I mean, it really does look better.
It does look better.
It looks better. I don't think it's necessary to put a timeline on it. If you continue to do the work that you're doing right now, the pace you're doing, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and like I told, you know, money goes so far. When you get more money, you can continue to do more work. It's not like we're gonna stop right now like the way it is right now. I mean, we've come this far. I mean, come on, Jim. You know? You may have the money to do it all in one day. Okay, that's nice, that's great. But we put a lot of hard work and manual labor into it.
I know.
It's gonna take us a little bit longer.
I get it.
Like I said, by no means we're not stopping where it's at.
Period, end of sentence. It only goes so far. When I gotta rent this kind of machinery and do what we had to do.
John, recommendation?
At all, I mean, if you wanted to abate, I'd have no idea what even is left to abate at this point, other than removing concrete. My thoughts are if they're going to have this... Or rip something there, they're gonna need to remove the concrete anyways. If the council wants to just keep an eye on it, just put it on the agenda for a month down the road or whatever. If you kind of make the decision that we're done, then you'd have to start the process all over again.
How much time do you think you need before you know an answer on what you're gonna do? Thirty, sixty days?
Well, what it depends on... This weekend, we're finishing plugging that plug. I've already bought it. I have to rent a tractor to move that concrete and get the dirt in. And I will have that by the weekend. Then the next thing I've got to finish paying for the one building I have on the lot. Then I will be ready to move in what I am going to make into the restaurant. And that is when the decision will be made on that concrete that's left. Because they will be making that building a permanent structure. And they may need that concrete gone to do that. Or they may be able to just add concrete around what's there because it's one big block with like a step up. But I am going to put my water pipes. I can put like a wood thing because the other water pipes were buried under the foundation. And that is not happening this time.
Well, I mean, I just... After hearing that, I mean, I'd say let's track back in in sixty days.
DJ, just get the equipment. I'll tear it out, no charge. Just get the equipment, get it rented, and I'll come do it myself. No charge.
I just, you know...
I mean, she's already got the money saved for the tractor. We just need a good weekend, another weekend of time, hours, an hour-long of weekend. And it'll be done. But with left of the concrete, we've...
I don't have any problem with...
Sixty days, review this property in sixty days.
Sixty days is fine. I don't have a problem. If you think you can get it done within that time.
All she's got to do is get the equipment, I'll come do it myself, no charge.
So we have a consensus.
We're just waiting for her to get the money saved up for the tractor, finish. But thank you for the offer.
For that property? Question? Sixty days.
So, that's the first weekend in October?
Roughly, yeah. Yeah, we would look at this on the... What is that, the second of October? The second of October would be the meeting that we even talked to you again on.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Other citizens' comments?
I'm asking for the city to pay for damages on Daryl's semi from July 20... Or June 25th in the amount of $4,416.19 to cover the bumper, the axle, and the frame of the semi filming to a hole on Fifth Street. It's been mentioned multiple council meetings that Fifth Street's been an ongoing issue. I feel due to the negligence and inadequate maintaining of the road, you guys should make it right. So we need to go forward with our attorney. We will include downtime, lost wages, out-of-pocket expenses, inconveniences, and all legal fees. It will be much better soon. And I would ask that your response to my claim be sent in the form of whether it can be sent to my house.
Sure. And is... Who is the vehicle that was damaged, titled to?
That would be to my business.
Okay, and you guys are both the owners of the business? Okay, very good. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Very good. Is the council aware of this issue fully? Okay, I have paperwork here that you can review.
Is that what the executive session's about?
Do what?
Is that what the executive session's about?
I think it was on the other thing.
Okay.
So basically, I came across this on Facebook when I talked to Daryl. There, from what we're guessing, was because of the rain over the weekend, Jeff had told me, Jeff and David had told me that their road was graded on...
Was graded on Friday.
Crap, I was gonna say Wednesday or Friday of the previous week through the rain and the way that the grocery stores run off is there ended up being a hole. The truck situation happened. Daryl told me what was going on. I sent the guys out and we closed the road until we could get it fixed, after Eric went and put rock in it. Tayla and I have been in conversation or in connection with the bills. She got the first three and we thought that was it. And then later, it turned out there was more damage. I had sent it to insurance and insurance denied it. So, I told her that insurance denied it and she's more than welcome to come and talk to you guys before they hit the attorney side of things. So... And then the last... Because the first total was like under $2,000. And then it ended up being there was a crack in the whole entire frame or something. So, that's what.
Yeah, it's probably something before council starts to discuss or council does anything that needs to be discussed in executive session. I think this is the first time we've heard of it.
Your motion?
For an executive session?
To add an addition, executive session?
My thought is, she's supposed to make the request and write you something like this. If that hasn't happened, it needs to happen and we can...
I did submit a request with her the day of the accident.
But I had her come in and do that.
Okay.
That's basically just a...
I mean, well, if we can have an executive session taken care of now, I'd like to do that.
It's up to you guys. I was just looking at...
Let's just discuss it tonight.
Thirty-two executive sessions are already on the agenda.
Thirty, but...
That's fine, we can talk about it now.
You charge where there are.
I do, and I like to make money, so...
It's okay, it should be okay then.
Yeah, let's just go take it care of tonight, I mean...
Yeah, I'd just soon discuss it with him and fair, I hope we need to do. So do we just wanna...
Do it now or...
amend the agenda or what?
That's one, I would say, how long?
Do you wanna... How long you need, John?
Seven minutes, ten seems a little much.
Do we want to finish citizens' comments before we do that?
Right.
And then we can amend it and add it and discuss it and then come back to it.
Okay. We'll do that for that time. Are there any other citizens' comments at this time?
I'm not sure of the address. I think it's 302 East First that you've scheduled. It's condemned. I think.
Corner First and Monroe.
Yeah, Corner First and Monroe.
Yes.
We've had a lot of comments about the condemning of buildings, wondering what happens when the city condemns it and then the city takes over that property. Does that raise our taxes or what? Not because you condemn it, I mean, because it becomes the city's and the city's paying the taxes, I suppose.
The city doesn't, won't ever actually... We just put the mowing fees and the demolition against it. If the property taxes are never paid, it'll go to tax office.
Yeah, it becomes a lien on the property.
Well, the other question on that, rather than tear down some buildings that look like they're pretty sturdy, why can't they be offered on a tax sale or something like that to see if somebody could buy it and bring it up to snuff?
I mean, legally, they belong to somebody already. I mean, and somebody can buy it and fix it up, I mean, at a tax sale. So, I mean, the possibility is somebody...
It's already been condemned, though. That's what I'm saying, instead of that, can that be done?
We didn't condemn the house.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't found... It was, the order was that he bring it up to...
Code.
Code or condition where it matches the neighborhood or whatever. It hasn't been found structurally unsound or something like that.
I thought it was condemned in the one meeting, that's why I wondered.
We just made it, yeah, but we moved to clean it up.
Yeah.
And we were allowing a certain amount of days for him to claim personal property, or that was discussed as well.
Yeah, I mean, the city hasn't... Yeah, the city hasn't taken the step to clean up the inside or... I don't know if there's broken windows or anything like that.
I think there's a couple in the back.
Okay, I mean, well, I mean, in all honesty, it probably sits there until the county tries to sell it on a tax sale. I don't know how far behind it is on taxes, but that's probably its future, is that it's gonna be purchased by somebody fairly cheap.
The other thing that's come up is people are... No, it hasn't been this meeting because there's back and forth going on here. But I know, I've been gone a long time, but then the last meeting I was in, you guys were spanked big time. And instead of that, people just get up and complain, can't we have a question and answer right here, more like what we're doing now? Instead of people just griping and then you disappear and we never see for sure what the answer has been. I mean, right now, you're giving an answer on a lot of these things. But can these kind of things be done later? Question and answer.
I mean, the council really has the... I mean, they have the authority if they do want to answer questions during citizens' comments, they can, they can choose to refrain.
I see what you're getting at. It's just, it's just that this last meeting, people just get up and they start, you know...
Well, no, there's been at least two meetings.
They start talking and talking and talking, and then when they get done talking, they turn around as fast as they were talking and walk away.
Well, because you gave us three minutes and that was it.
Yeah, the rules.
There's only so much we can say.
I know.
Under some stuff.
But if a person, instead of three minutes, had three questions that they were allowed that could be answered right then, I think it would take a little bit of the steam out of some of the people that are...
That would, that would be fine, but like Ryan just said, it depends on the situation. There are certain circumstances that we cannot answer some things. And some people in the community don't understand that. And that's unfortunate, but that's just the way it is. That's the law.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
And I'll further address the house. You know, the... There is a group that, the League of Kansas Municipalities that represents several cities across the state, have tried to get the law changed, which would allow like a nonprofit to go in and save a house before it becomes more dilapidated. And that bill continuously gets passed by the legislature and has been repeatedly vetoed by the governor, mainly because he saw it as kind of a taking of somebody's property. And whether that'll change in the foreseeable future, I don't know. But we really don't have that kind of nonprofit here that would, that would do something like that. But the idea is to go in and fix it up and then, you know, immediately put it up for sale because it's an issue in a smaller city like this that they don't really...
I appreciate that.
Sure.
I just want to clear the air with you, like those... When we started on that house project, it's not to tear a bunch of houses down, it's to motivate property owners to help us clean up this town. It's not, I'm not after anyone. I want to see this community better. And there are a ton of houses that look like crap. And I am trying to take what I can to try and make it better. You know, lawns, houses, you know, I mean, that's all I'm trying. I'm not trying to take anyone's property. No, I don't believe that's anyone's intention. And I hope that people don't think that. I'm just trying to do what I can do to help make this town better. I'm stuck here, everyone else is stuck here. Let's make it better.
Thank you, I appreciate this.
It's your job, along with our staff, to enforce our policies.
Oh, and it's my job.
But it's... The point is, is that it's your job to enforce our policies that the city has.
Right.
And so, and you doing your job, you take a lot of flak for it, just as everybody does. But the important thing is that the intention, I could say, of this council is to clean up our town and keep it clean. There are other communities within this county and this state that look like trash, and we don't. There are some things that do, but as long as we can continue to work forward in that, we can clean up our town. I have people who have come to me in recent that have built houses here that says, I can't find a place to build a house because I don't want to wake up and look out my front door to a piece of garbage across the street. I don't want to invest these dollars in this community if I have to look at that.
I agree.
So, that's just, that's our intention, that's our purpose in doing this.
I agree, but there's been a lot of questions, why are private owners told, you gotta do this, this, and this? And yet, the square is like it is. And they say we can't touch certain people because they don't...
I've been working on the square.
You're a doll. Thank you, dear.
And we're limited to our staff and what we can do, and we just start going down the list.
We need a bunch of volunteers.
Absolutely.
We want to improve instead of condemn. And this, this is the feeling, that it's been, that we hear we're being condemned, condemned, instead of encouraged. And we need pride shown.
Some of that is...
I don't know anything about Linsburg, Kansas, but they took over in pride in their town. And they don't have to just condemn their pride.
Some of that terminology echoes state law, too. And so, the city is limited by state law what it can do and has to go through certain processes. So when the legislature uses a certain term, we're kind of stuck using that term, even though what you think that term means is that not what...
Can't just mean, it's the town. Oh, thank you.
Just to clarify.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's getting better.
Yes, it is.
Any other comments? No other citizens' comments? Move on to consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting July 7th to 2018 and special council meeting July 26th, 2018. Also appropriation ordinance 080718 in the amount of $84,709.89 in petty cash, $27.88. Your motion? Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Lauren, Miss Eus, any other discussion?
I had a few questions on, if you guys noticed, some items on the 1% sales tax fund. There were four or five items. Do you know, Jamie?
Um, yes.
Which one is it being?
Well, it's gonna be one of those papers that you guys sign that shows the funds here.
Let's see, we spent $3,700 in the grocery store.
Right here. It's all listed out. That looks like when Ryan had asked for the invoice, we went ahead and DC and B was a two-inch female ball valve, 12 half-plastic...
That's on the grocery store.
Yeah, that's all grocery store. Davis Electrical had a bill of $1,300 to reroute electric wire and conduit. Harder Auto was a wire test lead, looms, ring terminals, 100 cable tie, rubber metal plant.
What are we doing? And that's why I'm...
That's major service stuff and water service stuff, that's what it is.
I'm just questioning whether it needs to come from that fund or not. I didn't know if the guys saw that or not.
The ball valve was for the two-inch water meter and the ring terminals were hooked up 13 thermal meter. That's what they were for.
Right.
And that stuff. I mean, we don't have to take it out of there, that's just where it went.
I just wanted to make these guys aware and make sure they knew that that's...
Sure.
I mean, there's money coming out of our 1% sales tax fund.
Right, right. It's an infrastructure deal and we just felt like that's where it was used, that's where we'd take it out, just like the terminations, the elbows, all that stuff, you know, we took it all out of there. I mean, we didn't feel like it should come out of our regular electric budget because that's where it went.
This is dated from April of 18 to...
For the grocery store.
Oh, it's that grocery, not this grocery.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. Parts of stuff that went out there, sure.
This is the amount that's gone.
Been taken out since this date.
From the 1%. Okay.
That's where, that's where it went, that's why we took it out.
Okay, gotcha.
And it can be changed. You don't want to cut out.
I was thinking white fluid liner, not old grocery store. Excuse me.
No.
I was wrong.
It was all, it was all material that got bought for out there, that's what it was.
I just wanted to make sure you guys know that because, I mean, that was never discussed to be taken funds out of 1% sales tax.
Especially considering that we decided not to take funds out from... There was another issue that we were thinking on pulling the money out, but we decided not to and...
That was a truck.
Huh?
That was the truck.
That was a truck.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Which we did take the $1,000 bill out of that for the retrenching.
Okay.
Right now, we...
Correct? We did take the retrenching out of the, for Davis, out of the 1%, correct?
Yes, and the $1,300.
And that's, to my knowledge, all that was there. I didn't have any knowledge of this, but, I mean, as far as I would say, is within spending authority, you know, as long as it's falling into that.
If, if the council doesn't want it to come out of there, it doesn't have to.
Sure, 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 sure. But what I was saying when I saw it, I said, well, as long as it's within the spending limit, it really doesn't bother me because it is for that type of project, which I believe it would qualify under the standards. I said, anything over that, I would feel that it would need to come to us to take it out of that. That's what I said, so I don't know how you guys feel on it.
What about the couple here for... Like the reimbursement for bed sheets?
Yeah, I just saw those on there, we probably need to move those out. That was for, that was during Jubilee.
I mean, I'd like to not spend it, I mean, if it's smaller stuff, I don't think we'd nickel and dime it. I'd like to, if it's a big expenditure for the grocery store, I don't mind taking it from 1%, but, I mean, if... don't mind taking it from the 1%, but, I mean, I don't think every single thing has to come out of 1%.
I think we're done with material out there now, anyway. I believe we are, that was the last of it.
Thoughts, council?
Put her on the spot, she thinks. Well, Pam.
Jeff, on the grocery store, the new driveways that are getting ready to be poured, it appears that they're going to be higher than the elevation of the road.
It's pretty close, but I questioned Chris on where he said it, but.
And if they're higher than the elevation of the road, you're going to have water backed up.
Maybe, maybe just a little bit. Maybe just a little bit. We get in there and shoot that, you know, we might come up with different results. And I think he was just going by standard grade of what he had there on the south end of property, you know, so. And I asked him, I said, did you want to dive into the dirt and keep it up there?
Is Chris doing the.
We spent this, where we're going, spent this.
Being spent.
But I don't know exactly all on that.
It's basically from here down.
All the 1% sales tax. The description, everything that we have laid out within that.
It is written for all government functions. You guys go earmark, part of that sales tax for Stafford County Act on Development, which I think is what Carolyn was talking about.
Sure.
But what'd you say, a hundred and some thousand in the amount?
Oh, well, we've collected a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine, seventy-two, and then with the sixteen whatever out.
That's through the end of.
That's everything, that's the whole.
You get that quarterly monthly, so the end of the, so, basically, end of the quarter.
But with the sixteen out, you're sitting about a little less than a hundred and sixteen thousand?
So, you got, your commitment to Stafford County is fifty, fifty thousand.
So, we'll be fine for that payment?
Yeah, so, which is about, you're going to pay them about twelve and a half quarter, so you've got plenty of.
Sure.
Payments is good.
I mean, Marshall, you're basically saying that we should try not to touch that as much as possible?
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want you taking anything out of it.
Your total commitment is like half a million, five, ten, or five?
I want to ask Pam, like, how we're doing on the other account.
But see, we haven't, we put a sunset on our tax.
Yeah, I can think that was ten years.
And so, the thing is, is the more we spend out of it, we may have to come up with money after the ten years we pay for it, because we're already into a year and a half worth of collecting 1% sales tax, and we ain't made the first payment.
Right. So, you can look at it from that perspective, unless I touch it until we reach.
Ten years of payments. So, what I'm saying is, is if we get down, I mean, say we've got last year's fifty thousand, and this year's fifty thousand, in theory, we only have sixteen thousand sitting there, because we still have to pay ten years out. So, what I'm saying is, is I don't. You're going to have to vote on it again in eight years. And, yeah, hopefully pass it, but that's what we don't know yet. Right, but what I'm saying is, is we need to keep until we make that first payment, we need to make sure that money is sitting in there.
Well, we can change all that, I mean, we can, we can put it, we can take it out of something else.
Right, right.
I mean, that's the only reason we did, that's where it went, but.
And I understand, you know, it's going to the grocery store, I just want to make these guys aware, you know, we don't need to care.
Sure, sure, yeah, if you want to pull down an electric budget, we'll pull it out there, there's money in the electric budget to do it, so.
I think we need.
I'll do whatever you want to. We can re-code it, sure.
What? Want to make a motion for that?
No, I think you just direct Jamie to, you can either, you can make changes to appropriation on this and say with those changes and move it.
Do I have a, do I have a consensus with the council not to spend money out of there unless we approve it?
I mean, we did approve the thousand, the one thousand dollars.
Right, right, for that bill, yes. But is that the thought? If that's the thought, that's what I will direct Jamie to do.
I'd like to keep as much sales tax money in there in case we need it.
So, I see two yeses, a third yes. That's what we'll do.
So, make a motion to adopt appropriation ordinance with the reduction of whatever's currently listed on that line item for.
We have to vote on that one.
Counselor, is this a motion? If the amend or existing motions have been voted on, what's your Robert Rules order? For start over?
Guys, I love the lack of.
No, it's already been voted second and voted on.
It hasn't been voted on.
Discussion, so it can lack.
It can vote.
Vote? So, other discussion?
Was there a second?
There was, motion second.
Okay.
No other discussion?
Vote on the current appropriation.
All in favor? All opposed? Everybody? Did you abstain?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the appropriation ordinance and the changes.
Which would be the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars and seven cents, because we took the thousand off of that.
And put that in the motion.
I'll second that.
Good night.
I'm letting her have a moment to get this put down correctly. Okay, I have a motion in a second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries five oh.
Did you want to do the executive session now?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add a seven-minute executive session to discuss attorney-client.
Attorney-client privilege related to the claim of.
To the claim.
Of Mr. and Mrs.
Willinger.
To include.
To include the council.
Can I call in Jamie?
Jamie, attorney, mayor.
Second. Motion in a second, to reconvene at seven forty-seven. All in favor? All opposed? Call meeting back to order. This time, John is going to review the case pertaining to this issue with Willingers, and get back with them with a response on this. Where are we going to review, or are we just going to leave it at that?
Well, Jamie will send everybody a copy of it.
Copy of it.
We're going to review it, and he's going to review it, and then we'll have something for you.
Do you guys need any pictures or anything?
If you would have them, that would, that would help some, get them to Jamie, so you can get them to.
That would be good. So, we will get something ready for you as a response at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, next item, budget hearing.
I, you have to get out of reading.
Oh, that's right, yeah, let's move on to that, okay. I need a motion. Just, I'm going to slam my gavel. We're opening the budget hearing, seven forty-six.
Any questions? Or you make your motion?
To approve the budget. To approve the 2019 budget.
To approve 2019 budget.
Have a motion on the table?
Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Hughes and Sanders, any other discussion?
Can I ask a question? Can we get a copy of, can citizens get a copy of the budget after it's approved?
You can, you can come to her office and request that. Any other discussion? Motion in a second, all in favor? All opposed, carries five oh. Moving to the meeting, seven forty-seven. Department head and committee reports, Brandon Minister and Lisa Cornwell, anything from recent?
I don't think we have anything, we got a reimbursement from the state, from the Safe Routes to School, and Pam and I are going to look into that a little bit more and get with Lisa, because, well, we need to double-check the amounts, I'm not sure that they reimbursed us the right amount, so we're going to be looking into that. And then Laura Davis and I are working on, not that it's a grant, but Laura Davis is helping with, I think it's the Golden Belt Foundation Grant or something like that, for play equipment at Brown Park, so we've been working on that, getting some prices, and we'll eventually shoot that and see where we're at. But I'm getting everything together before I even, but that isn't the work, so.
Comment on the Safe Routes to School, I think we spent twelve hundred dollars on an engineering study on that thing, the other thing. For twelve hundred dollars, how many feet of concrete can you pour, Jeff? Just concrete, about two-hundred-and-seventy?
Probably.
Yard wide, four inches deep, two-hundred-and-seventy feet long, I think it's ten yards.
Probably.
And you can buy four and a half sack mix for ten yards.
A little over a hundred dollars a yard?
Yeah, so, we could pour three hundred feet of concrete on these sidewalks that this engineer charges twelve hundred dollars for, we're spending all this money doing this, this is, this is not smart.
Is it some required by the grant?
Well, it's probably required by the grant, where our city employees could go.
But on the backside is how much, how much, with this project in its entirety, how much money would be spent or granted, and how much concrete would we get out of the deal by the end of that project?
It'd be probably like the sidewalk to nowhere, where an engineer designed the sidewalk to go around an oak tree, that's eight inches diameter and within a foot of the oak tree. Really?
Yeah, I understand that's frustrating.
Well, this phase of Safe Routes to School would connect the sidewalk to nowhere to the school, so we would be accomplishing something. You're saying.
Well, you start from nowhere and end at the school, but.
Well.
Is that the Golden Belt Community Foundation crank you're talking about, is that the splash pad or the play equipment?
Yeah.
Not the same? Keep looking to get prices for.
Getting that first together.
At that point, I would agree with Jim, that if we can pour that much concrete, depending on how much we'll end up with at the end of the project.
That doesn't include your labor, but your labor's probably double that. You know, John Mansell would quite group it, but that's, that's no problem there, I'm just saying what the concrete costs, what an engineering fee costs. Sometimes you get into these grants, and you spend more money.
Than the, than the.
Than we can we split. You know, there's six feet of sidewalk by the little Ford Bronson.
I mean, I can talk, I mean, that was kind of started before I got here, I got thrown into that one, so, I mean, I can talk with Lisa, do you have any information with the Safe Routes to School stuff?
I don't really, I mean, I think that Sid had called our office, because there hadn't been a lot of communication recently with them on that, but I don't know a lot of the details, Ashley would be better to provide that.
I can get with Lisa and figure out, so. Yeah.
Anything else for Lisa? Because I would like to see an update on this, because like Jim said, another twelve hundred dollar bill, and another twelve hundred dollar bill, and another twelve hundred dollar bill, we don't have any sidewalks.
Well, not, those bills are being sent to the state and reimbursed.
Sure, sure, but.
But, you know, that's my money, too, at the state.
At the state level, that's still money going out.
It's not free money that falls from the heavens.
I know.
Quit shooting the messenger here, I'll get Lisa to the next meeting.
Would appreciate it. Let her know what we're talking about, so she can prepare for that.
I will prepare her.
Thank you. Moving on, police department report. I don't have anything to report at this time, unless you guys have questions for me or Bill.
I don't think so.
Nothing? Moving on. Fire chief Sanders report.
I don't have anything.
Anything for fire chief? Moving on, city clerk Jamie Gaddy report. You have two things on here. It's all you get. Fine.
I think I put the Cruz the Square Car Show and Craft Beer Festival on there just to remind everyone that it's happening. Get a little free publicity there, since everyone's paying attention to the agendas. But we do have everything lined up, we started a raffle, I think we have four different prizes, tickets are five dollars, the grand prize is the TV without the dog.
You don't get Chewie?
No.
He was in the picture, so.
I spoke with Bruce at the liquor store today to kind of get started on working together to get the beer purchased and all of that. And I think, Pam, do you have anything on that?
No, I think everything's too much done.
Now, we have.
I think Pam said buy tickets.
Yeah.
Just make sure you don't pay sales tax, or you're not paying sales tax to us.
Right, okay.
Check.
Just curious, Jamie, what side of the square, are you just in the brown square?
The car show is, we're going to try, depending on the amount of entries, we're going to try to eventually in the years fill the square, but I think for now, the food truck I have coming is going to be over here on this corner, the pizza place is going to run a buffet for two dollars off, with the drink included, and then I might still go talk to the New Mexican restaurant, see if they'd like to rent a special. We're going to try to bring in food trucks, but that's not always the easiest. Bringing stuff in on the first annual of things has just not been very fun, because everyone wants to know the turnout.
Local people are willing to offer a discount, that's, that's great.
So, we're, we're trying to keep everything local and all of that, so.
True.
And then the beer tasting will be in the Dylan's parking lot, so.
Beer tasting or beer drinking?
Beer tasting. And I have, we're getting pint glasses, so, I'm a real brother's. Like, if you've gone, you just get like little cups, and you can't reuse them, so we figured pint glasses would be neat, because then you could reuse them. So, our trash company sponsored that, so they're local.
They don't have to haul the trash.
Yeah.
Okay. What else?
I might hire security for that. The rezoning is, the zoning commissioner, what have you, is talking, been talking for, I don't know how many months now, of the industrial park, we've kind of made headway on that, I don't really know the process, I don't know if I need your approval to keep going forward, or not, Amy, we've got everything sorted out.
It's all done, though, is it not? And it's ready to publish if and when it's passed by the council.
We've got everything sorted out, and then, I guess I have to go talk to the surrounding property owners and all of that, so, I don't know if I need your approval to continue with it, if that's what you guys want, like, do I bring it to you guys?
Not until it's, until the zoning committee's done with it, it doesn't come to us for approval.
So, I go through the process, and then you approve it? That sounds like a fun idea, okay.
You have to make sure it's up to snuff.
That is what I'll do.
I think surrounding.
Yeah, I have to.
People come here, when you have your zoning.
And then we have a public hearing, right. Okay, well, I guess I'll move forward on that.
You guys look, and I don't have any other papers.
Anything else for Jamie?
You want to discuss this here?
Handbook.
Just getting them done.
Anything else for Jamie? Moving on, city superintendent Jeff Williamson.
Two weeks ago, Saturday night, we had a service call out in the west end of town, Jason was in the air repairing a piece of wire, and our little bucket truck started rattling pretty hard. We got him down out of the air, and we got back down to the plant, and we called Morgan Diesel to have Pratt have a look at it, and he thinks we've either got a broken connecting rod, or a broken piston, or something. And I have a, I have a sheet on that truck from the day that it was new, and of course, some of you that have been on the council while knew that we had problems getting it up here when we first bought it, Altech stood behind it at that time. Truck's got about a hundred and thirty thousand on it, but some of you that are mechanics would know that six-four in a Ford was not a very good motor. And Morgan Diesel recommends that we put a new motor in it, so, I also went to Marmee's in Grapevine and discussed it with them, I got two prices to repair it, and I'd even, I talked to Marshall. And I'd even, I talked to Marshall. I really didn't catch any of you other guys that were, either I couldn't catch you the day I was doing this or you were, if you're employed by somebody else, I didn't stop to talk to you. So, I did price a new truck to put that chassis on. But that truck would have to go to St. Joe, Missouri. That's the closest Altech shop that they have. And the turret underneath that holds the boom would have to be moved and replaced because the new frame is different than the frame on this truck. And by the time that you put a truck underneath it and you repaired it, I don't think you want me to tell you how much it cost. It's about $80,000.
Yeah.
So, um, I would really like to get this, I think if we start doing some long-term budgeting, that in, you know, if we can keep this truck together for seven or eight years, that by then maybe we'll be able to see our way to do something new. The big truck is 23 years old, and of course, I, I pushed really hard to buy this truck when we bought it. And we thought we were getting a good truck, but until you can see the VIN number on it and see its past history, you don't know. You buy it just like you buy any other used car. They don't have a Carfax for bucket trucks. I wish they did, but they don't. But I found out on the phone the other day that in 2012, Altech bought Liftall, which is the company that built the bucket on our big truck. And they don't repair them past 15 years. They don't have the parts for them. So, that's the reason we kind of babysit that old truck anyway, but it's been a good truck and it's still a good truck. And it's, I have no reason for it to think it's gonna fail. But we use this little truck and we use it every day. So, I think cost-wise, you know, we get a warranty with this motor through Ford, so I don't know whether it's 336 or what it is for sure, but the cost to replace it's $17,000.
Seventeen or eighty?
Or 18.6 if you want to take it to Marmee's. Seventeen at Marmee's. Same motor either way you go.
Still covered under warranty either way?
The motor should be covered because it's a, it's a Ford crate, it would be a Ford crate motor, so. And there's some of the things they do take off of it. The turbos and stuff are all new, but, you know, the covers, the valve covers, the water pump covers, stuff like that is all, is all reused again. But the, uh, the basic motor is a full long block is what it is. And then they figure about 40 hours to change it. The cab has to come off of it. I was looking back through the sheets that I got when we got the truck home the first time, and it looks like that this has just been kind of a nitpick deal ever since it was new. I mean, 10,000, 20,000, you know, it's just been something. And I think these, you know, I think former Mayor Bob Steinmeier said, you know, that they'd had quite a few problems with these motors. We thought we'd get lucky and get a good one, but we didn't.
What's the warranty they're giving you on it?
On?
This new engine if they put it in?
I think it's 336, I believe it is. I'm not gonna swear to it, but I'll find out before, three years or 36,000 miles.
What motor they gonna put in?
They'll have to put a 6-4 back in. See, and the thing about these trucks is they're computer controlled by, Altech has a computer behind the seat on there that controls the throttle and that stuff for safety reasons. Too, so, I don't think you really want to put something different in it. I think you want to stay with what you got. But, yeah, we won't, you know, we wouldn't put, this little, this bucket truck we got's 23 years old, it's got 14,000 miles on it. I mean, it doesn't leave town. They just don't. You know, a, uh, an emergency and maybe in Hoysington or somewhere in a storm, you know, or a storm aid deal, but other than that, they don't leave town. They just don't. So, I guess what I'm asking.
Do we have money in equipment reserve?
Money's in equipment reserve. I hate to take it, but I, you know, I'm kind of running low on choices. It really is. But we can start doing some long-term planning.
Jamie, do you know what's in the equipment reserve?
I can tell you too, I think. No, we can't, I'm on a mission.
Has it disintegrated yet?
Ninety-five.
The motor?
It's left in the budget.
We haven't started it yet. We're afraid to. It's sitting in the plant.
Equipment reserve?
That was 170 something.
What's cash balance?
I don't give a budget amount anymore.
It's cash balance.
Better get the cash.
Cash balance, only 5,000.
Budget and cash are two different things.
Yeah.
That's the cash.
Their amount is 95,000. $66.80 is the cash balance. On the budgeted amount, it's cash.
I will make sure that we get a writ of order with that motor when we get it, you know. It'll depend, I mean, if, if I can't get one this way, I'll have to go to, I'll have to go to Marmee's. There'll be $1,500 difference in it. But I know that if it goes into the Ford shop up there, it'll be documented from the time they open the door on it. I mean, that's just the way they do things. So, if you prefer I spend that extra money, take it up there, I will. I did talk to the shop foreman up there, and they've done two of these trucks already for Midwest Energy, so they kind of know what they're getting into, so.
Thoughts?
Have you tried checking out the company we bought it from? Because I mean, we probably don't have.
I talked to the guy yesterday and I'm supposed to call him tomorrow.
Because I mean, we, technically you can tell them we haven't put more than 10,000 miles on it.
It's three years old. Miles don't mean anything to them. Trucks are based on hours. You know? I mean, that's, that's the reason they sell used trucks. I mean, they, they warranty for 90 days and then after that, like, it took us 90 days to get it up here. I mean, we started in April. I think we finally got it out of Ponca City the last of May or the first part of June. We already did the whole right-hand bank and the high-pressure fuel pump and.
What year is it?
It's an '08. So.
I would probably go to Marmee's if it were my truck because of the warranty and the expertise.
Well, Ford stands behind it, you know.
Ford stands behind it. I mean, Morgan Diesel's a good shop.
Yeah. And that's where I got that from, was from Cody. It works for me because he said the city of Pratt guys take all of the trucks that Morgan, you know, and they do a good job. But still, if it goes into Ford Shop, it'll be Ford certified.
What was it for Marmee's? Exactly 18.6 even or what?
Eighteen, let me look at my job here. Eighteen five ninety seventeen.
Twenty-three year old bucket truck. I don't know what's your, I'm just. Sure. Equipment reserve, you know. Anything else that you've been bought equipment wise? People bugs.
The only other thing I know that, and it probably come out of repairs, is I had a service machine in the shop that we've had for 20 years. I haven't gotten the bill on it yet from Aaron, but that's, you know, normally we take it out of regular, out of that department if we can for this year's repairs. We won't take it out of reserve. We wouldn't take anything out of reserve except for something like this. Unless we discuss it with you first, so. I mean, I'm kind of at a spot where I don't know what to do. I mean, it'd be great to put that under a new truck, but still, you know, 15 years is all they do. Unless they recertify that body, it'd be out in four years.
What's the cost to hire a bucket truck if you were going to hire a bucket truck per hour?
It's about $160 for the truck and about 85 for the alignment. I think when.
Do they come together?
Yeah, how they come together. If you bring alignment, a foreman, a pickup, and a bucket truck, you'll spend about $500 an hour is what you'll spend.
Bad thing about buying a big truck like that, $5,500 or whatnot, you know, you gotta buy a brand new one if you're gonna buy one.
Yeah.
You can't buy a used one because it's been in the oil field or it's been doing the same thing.
Yeah, well, we know this one came from Duke Energy, but Duke Energy has 3,000 trucks. I mean, you know.
They've had them used once.
Yeah.
It's hard to get used.
It's, it's hard to buy, it's hard to spend the money, I understand, but you know, it's hard to take care of it if we don't have them too. So, I thought this was the least expensive way. We'd get along for a few years and get some things straightened out, why then we can look at buying a new truck, so.
Can you get one when you need it, if you lease one?
Oh, yeah, I'd have to go to St. Joe to get it, but I could lease one if I needed it, sure.
Or, but if you leased, if you leased a truck with a man, can you get him when you need him on calls?
Oh, sometimes. Yeah, if we had to have one really bad, I've got some guys I could call, but you know, we've kind of traded back and forth with Stafford on a lot of this stuff, and if we need help, them guys come over and help us. I mean, we've loaned them trucks, they've loaned us trucks. We do stuff back and forth with them all the time. So, they have two trucks just like we do.
How did you get back, how did you get by back in the day, Jeff? You just had one truck, I mean, just possibly, yeah.
We worked as one truck. I mean, that's just what we did, sure, sure. And you know, part of the reason that we bought this one was we thought we could relieve some hours on that big truck, so it would last longer because they're so expensive to buy.
Right.
A big truck like that now is probably 260, 280, I suppose. Give or take a little bit. I mean, you know, we climbed a lot when we were younger, but insurance and everything else anymore, we don't climb. I mean, I'm 60 years old now. I really don't want to if I don't have to. I prefer not to. But I do have one guy that does climb, you know, but still, the safety aspect of it. I mean, when you're training a guy that's first year out of school, you don't put him up anything hot anyway. We get, you know, part of the deal is we get twice as much done. I mean, we can work both ends of what we're doing. It just, it makes it wonderful. But, uh, I understand it's expense, I mean.
We don't know on any of them trucks yet, do we?
I don't think so. I think they were up, I think they were up March of this year or April, weren't they?
That's what I was trying to find.
I think they were three-year deals and they were up this spring.
What did that truck cost us, Jeff?
Forty-five, forty-five six, I think is what we paid for.
And we've had it how long?
Three years. Three years this spring.
If you leased one with, you could lease one for about 350 hours if you get the truck.
Yeah, yeah, you could, and they do that stuff, you know.
What's that, Jim?
You could lease one for. About 350 hours, you could truck it lease for $10,000. When you leased one with, with man.
I don't know how many hours.
600 hours without a man.
I don't know how many hours we put in them trucks a year. We spend a lot of time, you know, I don't know.
So, the trucks were paid off in March?
Aye. To me, I'd kind of like to look into it a little bit more before we decide, Jeff, might not even want it fixed and then.
Well, I understand. It's been down two weeks. I understand.
Yeah. That's just my opinion.
My opinion is let's wait. We got one truck. I think we should use it the rest of the year and at the end of the year, see where we're at with numbers with our budget, and then from there, get a plan going. And the other option I was thinking is what's wrong with selling the big truck to pay for a motor for people?
I don't want to sell a big truck. I just don't.
I really, I mean, I really don't see it used too often.
It's used, it's used all the time if we're out, you know, if we can get to it. I mean, lately we haven't because we've been at the grocery store. But when we build line like we built from the elevator uptown, we put a truck on each end all the time. I mean, we work side by side. That's the way we do it.
I mean, with a $45,000 truck that we've had for three years, we're just gonna walk away from $45,000. I don't think that's fair. I mean, we need to do something, but I don't know exactly what you guys want to do about it, but.
Well, I'm not spending 80, I'll tell you that.
Well, I wouldn't spend 80 either, then you're really hurting yourself there, but.
If we're gonna buy a new truck, we ought to buy a new chassis with it. I just, I wouldn't separate them.
More often than not, I would say it's probably cheaper to lease the equipment than a distance owner. It's not just as convenient. But sure, planning, I'd lease the equipment. If you have time to plan, lease the equipment.
Lease, lease it for a year, deal a year lease on it, keep it for a year.
Well, just on the job. Can you lease it on the job? Lease it by?
I don't know how I do it. I'm five hours away, you know.
Okay. Do you have anybody close to this bucket truck?
There's not anybody close that leases bucket trucks. Altech's about the only company left in the country.
You saw yours, Mark?
He saw you.
No, it's not dielectric tested. I'm not putting my guys in it. I mean, you can lease it if you want to, but I'm not putting anybody in it. That'd be like leasing my little bucket truck, you know.
I think he just warned you. I wasn't putting any of your guys in it.
You know, we, we strain test these and dielectric test them every year. I mean, you know, the truck's safe. We just, it don't move without motor. It just doesn't.
Can you see what it would cost to lease a truck?
Oh, sure. I can call, I'm supposed to talk to him tomorrow. Sure.
See how they do it hourly or if they do it on?
So many hours a year or whatever. Sure. Be glad to.
Give us at least something to compare it to before we.
Something that we can look at before we make the final decision.
Sure.
Do we have an idea of how many hours we put on that truck?
You know, I can look back and see. I should be able to tell you fairly close. I'll just have to get the, I haven't looked at the hour meter this month, but I'll look at it.
And you might see it like in the lease agreement, what we're responsible for and what they're responsible for.
Oh, yeah. It'll all be written out.
Or, or, oh, what if, what if you call an electrical contractor? Can you do that?
You can't lease their trucks.
Can you carry them to do the job?
Oh, yeah, you can, sure. Just well, send me home if you want to. You don't want to write that check. The last time we changed out a judgment ball, it cost us $8,000.
Okay, that's, that's information. That's all I wanted.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd do some checking on leasing as far as any dollars.
Okay.
Review that at next meet.
Be glad to. I will.
Eighteen thousand is not unreasonable for a diesel engine, unfortunately.
It's, it's not the engine that costs $18,000. It's the 40 hours of having that mechanic at $120.
You just put another junk motor back in.
Well, it's brand new. We get, we get a chance. This time it's brand new.
Yeah, it's still a 6-4 diesel. It's still a 6-4 diesel.
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, we have a water report here.
Uh, I got a bill from Ned Marks for the stuff he'd done so far. It was about $1,800. I signed it, put it in, and it'll go into, into vouchers for next time. Um, Jamie, I think, has more of that than I do because he sent her, I think he sent her a, a list of what it cost that you'd asked costs on, on the tests and that stuff in the quote, yeah.
His recommendation and the, uh, his recommendation on the costs.
I think I got it. I think he just sent it to Jamie.
Jeff, how hard is it to dechlorinate the water after, before it goes into the plant? They're chlorinated at the well, dechlorinated.
We do not, I, I don't know.
I mean, it says right here at the bottom. Says it is possible to chlorinate the system of the plant, but then the water has to go through the vessels. Has to be de-chlorinated first.
Yeah, it'll destroy the resin if you put chlorine in the resin. Uh, he talked about that. I've never seen it done, Ryan. You know, when I left here, we were chlorinating at the wells.
Right.
And when I came back, the plant was done, and that, that residual, except no chlorine whatsoever, it turns it like glue.
Right.
So, see, we don't chlorinate it until it comes out of the storage tank and heads towards the tower. There's no chlorine inside the building other than what goes straight down the system to come to the tower. So, as far as dechlorinating, I can't tell you. I don't know.
It's a nice wonder, Dave. It seems like we never had problems with discoloration until we stopped chlorinating at the wells.
Well, I think part of that was due to the fact that the pressure was from the wells and you were getting higher pressure in your mains, see. See, now, all that is, all that is piped separately. It does not come down a main that you drink out of. It's, it's tied and run around and go straight into the plant.
Right.
So, when you don't have a well pumping, there's no pressure on the line. So, then when you get, when the water comes out of the tower, 38 pounds is the maximum you're gonna get. That's the high side of the tower. See, before, if you lived in the west end of town, we kicked that west well on, you might have 60 pounds. We was pumping straight to the tower, but now we don't do that, so. And I, and it's nothing more, a lot of it's nothing more than iron oxide from the inside, that cast iron is what it is. And I don't know whether it was the difference between chlorinating and not chlorinating that made the difference. I think a lot of it has to do with the amount of pressure that was in the pipe. Because before, we could wash it straight through. You know, that water was traveling by, you might take a cupfuls, but the other 600 gallon of metal was going straight to the tower. But now, see, it sets, it pumps in and it sets in that, it sets in that storage tank until that tower calls for water, and then once it does, it kicks a chlorinator on, we pump it in. So, 38 pounds, about somewhere between 32 and 38 pounds is about where it stays, 33. It just doesn't change between high and low tower. And the old cast iron, you know, some of this cast iron south end of town's 80, 90 years old. It's pretty old. Stuff around the squares that way. You know, we have changed some PVC in town, but not near all of it. But I think until the cast iron's all completely gone, we'll never get rid of it. You know, we get deals like that. We try and go down on the end of the line and flush that line and clean it back out. Because some of those hiders don't get used very much, and that does help flush it out, but it'll only work for a time, you know, and you're gonna have to do it again, so.
Did anybody ever check into if the state would allow us to blend their water? Do away with them vessels?
That's a deal, but we need to talk to KDHG out of downtown City about.
Because I'm looking at just replacing the media in the vessels is $80,000.
Every seven, 10 years.
And we're only on the.
It's only on five now.
You're on the problem.
Yeah.
I mean, we owe a little under a million dollars to them.
$976,000 or something.
And then I feel like we're never gonna get out of this hole.
You never will.
I don't know why we got it. I don't know why we got it. I don't know why we need to keep this.
I think you had a good sale.
Shoot, yeah, we did.
But I think, um, we'll call Alan here.
I would.
Alan will know.
I mean, even spending thirty thousand on all these tests for these wells, I'm still back to the point of. When we were chlorinating at the, at the wellhouse, when it was coming down the line, we didn't have near this many problems.
Well, the, the problem doesn't arrive, uh, arise from, uh, but it arises from going through the vessels is where it happens. You know, and, and, uh, the way those are designed, uh, sixty percent is the maximum that you can blend. They won't let you blend, seventy percent, I'm sorry. Seventy percent's the maximum you can blend.
Your thought, Marshall, is to look into the possibility of doing away with the plant itself and.
Turn it into a blend.
That was really Ned's idea too, you know, that we were hopeful, you know, when we sat down that day, you and I, you know. He was hopeful that someday we could get to that point, but.
Right.
I think the big thing is gonna be is how far we get to nitrates now first, guys, because I think with the wells we got right now, we can't pull it down low enough in the summertime. Even blending, you know, we can't, our, our, our two, our north well and that west well are just high enough. Don't think we can get it down below ten parts.
The thing is, is we can still drill a new well, cheaper than eighty thousand dollars, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's about what it costs to drill one.
Probably.
But you're only gonna have to do it once. You're gonna have to do it every five years.
That's right. And hopefully you can put it in a spot where you can have good, good, low nitrate water.
I mean, you're looking at, right now, if we were to do everything that needed to be done according to him, that's a hundred and ten thousand dollars that we don't have sitting around to do.
You're gonna change the resin in those vessels four times before it's paid off.
Right.
That's what you're gonna do.
I mean, we paid three point one million dollars for a treatment facility to treat two percent of water that is consumed.
That's consumed. You're right.
That is it. There is two percent drinking water in this town is consumed.
And we're not the only ones going through this. Pretty pretty's going through it too. And at this point, they haven't, you know, they've been trying to get their money together, but it's a mess. Believe me, I, I think about that. Every time I drive by a yard that's watered with city water and just think, you know, what they're paying for. Just the water because they're not consuming it.
Right.
Fertilizing it. Fertilizing their yard.
Well, the thing is, we take it out, they fertilize it, put it back in, you know?
Right.
It's a vicious circle. Yeah.
So if we did without the water treatment, plant itself?
Blended.
You would get rid of the vessels.
Basically, you take care of all four of them vessels and just have a blend station.
That's what that would turn into, so blend and plant, yeah. You wouldn't, you wouldn't get rid of the rest of it.
And I think you could probably sell them vessels to somebody.
Oh, I think they could be sold, yeah.
You think so?
Yeah, they could be sold, yeah.
I bet you you can get between one and one point five million dollars out of them, which would be enough to turn that place into what we need to do to blend it. And maybe even drill a couple of new wells.
High-priced deal for four big green tanks.
They don't even provide potable water, isn't it?
No, if you blend it and keep it below the state limit, you don't have to worry about it.
We just control how much high nitrate water and how much low nitrate water we mix together to keep the, the, the combination of the both up under ten parts is what we do.
What are your nitrates on these?
Oh, they're fairly low. This time of year, they're fairly high. They'll be up around eleven. In the winter time, they'll be down. No, no.
It's ten.
So where are you getting your low nitrate water?
We get it in the fall and in the winter. I mean, we can blend, we can.
You have to blend right now.
It depends on how hard you pump it is where it comes from. If you can keep your pumping down, you won't draw those nitrates out. But if you pump it the way it's designed to pump, it'll be up around eleven. And I think standard catch on that one would be about six, six and a half on that east one. But the west one will be up around twelve or thirteen right now.
So a third, two thirds.
But we get, but we get the best out of those two small wells behind the station.
And they're eleven.
And one of them is, that one has got some plant material in it. The other one, and we don't know for sure what that is either. But both of them together were down around five, I think. They weren't very high. But they only pump a hundred gallon a minute. You can only pump one at a time, see. They're too close together.
Because you'll have overlapping tons of depression.
Right, right. They're only about a hundred feet apart, a hundred twenty-five.
You'd have to have overlapping depression. What, eight inch? Twelve, six inch.
I think they're probably six inch.
I think the ones out there are six.
I think they are six, yeah.
And looking at these numbers, anytime we get a vehicle, anytime I make large expense. You know, I check with different people, you know, get more than one recommendation, you know?
That's what I was gonna say.
I'm not saying Ned doesn't know what he's talking about, but.
To speak to that, we did, he said he did bring that up and we all kind of said we were just gonna go with Ned at this time. We did say that. I heard, because he said he brought that up about getting multiple.
I could probably find you somebody else.
I'm not saying the guy doesn't know what he's doing, but sometimes other people can think of ideas as well that he may never think of. I mean, does word about Rosenkranz, I had heard.
I can, I can call an engineering firm that does that, that does the same thing he does and probably find somebody else here, around here that will do it. But you'll have to go through the same thing again, you know? I mean, at least they can look over the samples, but they'll have to go through everything that we've done. I don't know. You know, I can call now.
Rosenkranz, don't they have a?
They just drill. I don't know that they have an engineer on staff.
Does Gary not deal with municipalities, Gary Rosenkranz?
You know, I don't know. I don't know. We've never used them. We've always used Clark for years.
Right, right.
You know, so I don't know.
I could call Gary.
Yeah, I mean.
I think a second opinion is a good idea.
It wouldn't hurt.
If you invested in it.
I know, you know, I talked to Gary several times. He seems to know a lot about municipalities and he said it wouldn't. You know, he would, he would give a recommendation at some point if you want.
Yeah, I think it'd be worth it. Yeah. Like you said, it's like buying a car, you know? Sure.
You know, that's a lot of money.
Sure is.
When they put the plan in, they took one guy's advice off of it.
Yeah, right.
And look at what we got.
Yeah. We don't use them anymore.
Buy this or you're going to jail.
You had, you had, you had a salesman at that time that used fear tactics that worked.
Because he used car sales.
Exactly.
So.
I mean, it, it never hurts to look outside just a little bit as well.
I feel the same way.
But I would check and see if we can turn it into a blend facility if the state will even allow it.
Sure, I'll call, we'll call Alan in the morning. I'll have Jason call him in the morning.
I mean, because.
Yeah, sure.
By doing that, we have to do wells, you're saying wells as well? By turn.
We might have to.
To do what?
To be able to mix the, the two waters.
We still chlorinate at the, at the blend station, at the plant, you know, at the water plant instead of the wells.
We may have to put in another well at some point in time, but if you turn around and sell them vessels, you've got money to put in wells.
Yeah.
You're pretty well committed then.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, you're hoping the nitrates don't come.
You sure have to have the blessing of the state before you do it though.
But that's the thing, if the state's not gonna let us do it, then we're gonna have to figure out how to spend a hundred and ten thousand dollars to keep this place going.
Yeah, for the latter.
I'd like to have two or three options available to us.
You know, one thing we might do is, there's a lot of irrigation water wells east of town that perhaps we could get samples out of. We know what the nitrates are there. Uh, I realize it's a different draw and all that, but you still have some idea of what the nitrates are there. Because a plume of nitrates comes from southwest Kansas this way.
Right.
And, and of course. I think some of ours, talking to Ned and Jeff, might be local contamination.
I think there's some of that, but I also think, you know, and, and it's stand, it, it stood to be true that the farther east we go, the water gets better.
Water gets better.
It does get better, you know?
I, I checked over my wells when they were put in this project and, and I only had one water well. That way that had, and it was farthest southwest well that actually had any nitrates that were, I'm interpreting as a whole half. That was the only one that was about the state's accepted well.
I don't know.
As I came this way.
I don't know what kind of richer we'd have to go through to catch some samples like that and have them tested.
Yeah, I don't know what.
We can pick up, I mean, if we, we can request some bottles and have them tested, it's not that big a deal.
It'd be just, we could get.
I'd like to spend a couple hundred bucks, but we could catch a half a dozen around if we get around, take some pellet water here and there. I mean, it'd have to give us some kind of idea.
That would just give you information.
Sure.
It'll cost a couple hundred dollars a nitrate.
Probably, yeah. Ryan, I don't, I don't know this Gary, but if you'll get ahold of him and have him call me, I'll be glad to do whatever you want to.
Yeah, just, I, I don't know. Be worth a shot.
We've never used him, so I, I've never met him, but I'll sure be glad to do, you know?
Right. Seven nine two five five one two. That's for Gary.
Say that again?
Seven nine two five five one two.
Nine two five five one two. Okay, that's Rosenkranz, be honest?
Well, it's probably that amount of money I spend with him a year.
That's probably what it is. It's one of two things. You're either good friends or you spend a lot of money with him and you remember a lot of it too. Yeah, I'll give you a call. Sure will.
Yeah.
Be glad to. Yep.
Anything else for Jeff this time?
That's all I have.
City attorney, John Beverly.
The, uh, the only thing that I had is that those on the committee assisting in the Rattlesnake Creek stuff received a letter. From Jamie and then I also sent the draft lien, but I thought I was being too nice. Jim doesn't not be nice enough. So I think the best way is probably just to have a Congress call at some point.
Visiting with Warren Farrell. They since their negotiation and attorney client, they're not gonna give you a lot of information because it's still in negotiation with the state. The draft proposal is still the proposal. Darrell Wood, the president of the, uh, G M D five was going to try to talk to the governor when he was in town. Politicking the other day. I don't know if Darrell talked to him or not. I haven't talked to Darrell. There's a lot of politics.
Carolyn had an opportunity to say something at, at that meeting as well.
Well, okay, you were there too. I won't, I won't say anything if.
No, please.
Well, I'm just aware that, um, that some of the people that are more directly involved in this, not only talked to the governor here in Stafford County, but they also, um, made a point for citizens to be prepared to talk about that in Pratt County and Edwards and, um, Pawnee County, maybe others. So I think that the message came through pretty clear to the, um, the governor. And my understanding is that he has, um, said fix it. What that means, I don't know.
From what I heard, he, when you started to speak with him, he went, I have heard about this.
Well, and for what it's worth, I also, um, I, I tried to represent the city's point of view on this too, knowing that, that this is something that has come up. And so, um, you know, the, the farmers were there to talk about it from their perspective, but I shared with them a, um, kind of an economic snapshot of our county that I prepared last year for Congressman Estes, kind of also to prepare him for the idea that this is a political issue in our, our environment. Yes, it's, it's at this point a, a administrative issue in the division of water resources at our state government level, but there comes a point where this is also a political issue that's here because we have the federal government in our backyard. And I think that that's something that our federal group should be attuned to. So anyway, one of the things that, um, was in this economic snapshot was, uh, an overview of what the scope of economic activity related to agriculture and specifically crops is. We grow a hundred and twenty million dollars worth of crops in Stafford County. So I said, you know, just, just say ten percent of that goes away because of this administrative action. What other thing in Stafford County is gonna generate twelve million dollars worth of revenue overnight? Nothing. I mean, and, and look at all the kinds of programs we have at the state level trying to generate economic activity. We've used twelve of them with the grocery store. And it doesn't, that begin to touch what could go away just from an administrative action that doesn't even save water. It, that's the thing that I think a lot of people don't get. It's not conserving water. It's taking water from one use and giving it to another use. It's different than the Ogallala aquifer issue. So, um, anyway, I think the governor, we'll see, we'll see tonight if that is something that, you know, hopefully we've got the attention of somebody that has the ability to do something about it.
And that's just one side of things. I mean, things may end up in litigation. It's not maybe that, that they have simply tried to circulate water, right? Then we could deal with it from another, hey, no, but, but.
No wonders.
This is just, like she said, it's just kind of a presentation of what issues the city sees from their specific perspective.
And I did say that the city has, has discussed the issue and that it's not just an agricultural issue that our city of St. John is, is concerned about it.
You're never gonna track any industry that uses any kind of water. And, and I, you know, just, and I don't know if you guys have read this, but you're gonna have to reduce your average gallons per cabinet per day use and you're gonna have to reduce by, by half your percent unaccounted for water, which is twenty percent now, has to be taken out of ten percent.
Or, so this, they're curtailing the city?
This is in the July, yeah, this is the July twelve.
And I suppose that twenty-five percent is not accounted for as the water that's not metered that we pump on the parks and stuff. We meter all our.
That's all mentioned in the case, so.
It's a national geological survey study. It's not included in the draft, so I, I don't know how they can put that number.
They don't do it. No idea.
But, but Greensburg, you know, Greensburg has a lot of conservation type of stuff. They're at eleven percent. You guys are at twenty percent. And I, I don't, I don't, I have no idea. I have to ask them.
I think the reason it got that high is because we had two meters that quit. We had no way to track them. We had a well, a well meter that quit on that number five well. We couldn't, we couldn't calculate all that we've done, so I think that's the reason.
You could calculate, you knew what you pumped or what you.
We didn't have any idea what we pumped.
What do you need at this time?
Oh, I probably. See, those meters are not electronics. Those are mechanic.
Conference meeting, or Marshall can give me his ideas and put, put it together a different draft. I mean, like, some of the stuff is relying on Carolyn's numbers. It's simply just, you know, this is, we want you to know the city's tracking this. This is, this is things from our perspectives. This is what we fear, you know, this is, and it also says, you know, if there's gonna. The G M D five wants to institute some kind of educational outreach to schools and the public is what they say. Wish they would, they would come to you and say, we want to educate people on conserving water, you know, that kind of stuff. And that, that may happen already. I, I don't know, but.
Is your letter? Who's your letter addressed to?
Well, that's, I decided right after. You know, open for ideas.
It was, it was a little bit rare.
It's kind of in the board right now, but it could be changed to. What the board accomplished out there. All that stuff gets published probably anyways.
Gets published?
Yeah, for a while, it was on G M D five's website.
I think this, uh, this is on their website. I just, it's, I don't read very well off the computer. I just. Has Warren printed off for me. I think printed off for me. You know, what, what they're truly trying to avoid is what they did on the wet ball and with the I Guga. I know that some of the members on the board have been through the I Guga up there and know what happened from Greek and West in this city with the I Guga on the wet ball. And they don't want that to happen here. Because if you look at the economic development down the wet ball, it makes Stafford County look almost profitable. It's, it's a disaster.
I think maybe it's just the draft out so they can minimize the water section. And, and so you guys know, they have, the impact areas in St. John is right in the middle.
Ground zero, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and five. And in zone five. I think they need to eliminate four thousand acre feet of usage in this plant, which is twenty to twenty-five irrigation systems that need to be basically eliminated. Nature Conservancy and some other environmental groups are, are working to help.
I, are they really? I sometimes wonder how much those environmental groups are actually this involved in it or how much the state is kind of acting out of a, the position of fear that those environmental groups are going to scrutinize them. I don't know.
I, I've been told that, um, nature conservancy says they were twenty-five to fifty milliliters of water we could put into this project. And brush and purchasing water rights and some kind of. And that's just, you know, nothing's concrete. This is still all in the thinking stage.
And, yeah.
But they do have a valid perfected water right that is. But they do have a valid perfected water right that is much earlier than mine.
I'm not sure, there's, there's ways that you could contest that, because apparently they took, they allowed it to take twenty years to perfect it, whereas the farmers didn't have nearly that long. So, there are some, there are some angles that.
I would say that, that committee needs to, to meet.
Right around the water, the water right.
You mean all of us here?
I don't have another generation.
I think.
And I could take the money and go someplace else.
One more honest topic, where would you like all of John's fees for research he has taken out of? Because I think I've been taking some of them out of my budget, and my budget is not really for water rights, it's for administrative fees. So, would you guys like to tell me where you'd like the fees for this?
That's a solid question, Mr. Committee Member.
I believe he has worked quite hard on this project. I don't know, I don't know how many bills I've got.
Can you get that total for us?
It'd be nice to know how much, and John how much.
How much more do you think for lifting that scale?
Well, things change, that's the problem here is that.
You're smiling as you're talking to me right now.
There's also a piece of litigation that we filed here, it's back from this court. Uh, and there was a motion to dismiss that litigation, a justice-type motion. And so, they're going to go through a round of discovery, I don't know how much of that, that will be information on. I mean, it, it's just, I mean, right now, it's just providing information, if it, if it gets out of the city, they're going to have to do something else. And at that point, I'm going to say higher.
Where's the guy draw a line as far as where to put it?
I think they're on the right track with that, with the draft letter that you had.
The litigation, it parties, John has it, my understanding is they want the MSDS wells shut down first throughout this district, because they're under the impression that those of us that have MSDS wells, minimum desirable stream flow wells, and they're under the impression that they need to be shut down first. The Blue Water People said we'll take water right down with Eric, if they shut them down, then we're still back in the same game. That's all I know, and I know that.
Jamie, are you working on water totals? I figured you would. I would say that committee needs to meet with John and try to get something drafted up at least that we can review and, and figure out where you guys would like to direct that letter to. Counsel. Right spot. Jamie will get us a table with fees for that as well to figure out.
I don't think anything right now is pretty good to.
Right. Anything else for John? John, anything else for me if it does this time?
I'm already looking at over five hundred dollars.
Seriously?
Well, I don't know, that's just for May and June.
Was that a clerical error, John?
Uh, that's a.
That's just for May and June.
That's all.
I mean, what a, come on, John.
So, I'm over budget, you guys know why.
I mean, what account are you suggesting for it to come out of then? That's your job.
Jim's on the front, they issue up.
My fault.
Whatever, I mean, where.
You don't.
Pick it out of Jim's.
Is it really going to hurt your account?
Pick it out of my, if, if.
No, because I saved everyone a bunch of money, rest of your insurance.
Anything else for John? Okay.
It's the IT guy.
Okay, moving on, Mayor's report, um, just doing that as far as Police Department goes, we've, we've seen some applications, we do have the, the job postings out, I went ahead and, uh, asked Jamie to go ahead and send the information out to get the chief's position put on. Um, you know, normally we would, you know, the, the chief would come in and request to look to hire, um, at the time, based on the prior meeting. I hadn't heard anything otherwise for that, so I just wanted to make you aware that all the positions have been posted for, and we're waiting on applications for that. I have received some, um, making calls, doing due diligence on those, I don't have anything at this time that I would like to bring to you. As far as once I do, I would like to put a committee together, uh, two council members to sit in on interviews with me. I just think that's kind of a good thing to do as far as, you know, getting some of council's perspective into those interviews, because you, everybody thinks a little differently, along with, you know, putting Jamie in there as HR, um, maybe the sheriff, municipal judge, all those people are kind of on board to, to do those kind of things, so, um, I do, I, I had a ten-minute executive session to talk about hiring in the Police Department, and that has been crossed off at this time. I had some concerns raised on that, so I need to dot my eyes across my T's and make sure that everything is good there before I bring that to you for a part-time position. Any questions on that?
Where are you advertising that for?
We are on the, uh, is it KPOA?
It's like the.
It's the law enforcement hub.
Isn't very much where they go to?
I think that's kind of the standard, right, Bill?
I've seen a lot of it posted on newspapers and next to classified, I've seen.
That's, that's kind of something else I was going to ask, to follow that up, is that if council would mind if we did put something out there in addition to that, um, you know, a lot of people don't, don't like newspaper, but, um, a lot of, you know, as far as putting it out on our Facebook as a job thing.
On the Facebook page for the Police Department, now that I got access to it, there was a position posted on there for that.
Sure.
So, if I could get some help, somebody that's a little bit more at ease with doing the computer stuff, to help me put some more ads on there for it.
Sure. So, I don't know if council would be interested in maybe putting up an ad or something, maybe in a Sunday hunch paper that goes across the state as an extra way to get it out there.
I mean, we did get two news channels.
Well, but it was, well, it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, that's, that's not, that's inaccurate, that's not, that's, no.
I don't have a problem with you advertising it in other newspapers, but if you find.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't know what, uh, what the cost to place an ad like that would be, um, but if it's within the, the authority of the Police Department, then we'll, we'll do that if you're okay with that.
More than likely, they're probably looking on the website, they posted on, uh.
Sure, but, you know, where we've had this issue since mid-last month, receiving three or four applications. This is a statewide issue, nobody can find officers, I've been on three or four phone calls across the state dealing with people who are asking me prior, about prior employees, and they're in the same boat as we are, looking for people, so. I just think, um, at least initially trying to get a little more word out in different ways. But I will bring, bring it to you as, as I get it. Anything else for me as far as that goes, Police Department wise? Hiring, okay. That's all, all I have at this time. Okay, moving on to old business, handbook.
This is the moment I have been waiting for.
And I will just say that, I guarantee I spent more time at five hundred dollars.
On that, yeah, so did I. So did Ryan.
That thing never needs to be changed for at least fifteen.
Forty years. I would say, well, it needed it though, it needed the update. Everybody had an opportunity to review in its entirety that would feel comfortable in making a decision on this.
I'm making a motion in court, just need a second.
Motion and a second on the table to approve the handbook, any other discussion?
If it's going to be this easy, I would go all over it.
Any other discussion?
Um, I don't, I hate compensatory time off, I think it's a bad deal, I think it needs to be eliminated, and just go straight overtime.
I was prepared for you.
So, that was Sanders and Brian who made the motion in the second.
We have nine paid days, which amounts to ten thousand and eighty dollars on a fifteen dollar per hour employee that we give out every year. Pay time off, I think it should come out of vacation days first.
John, you want to add on this?
And on page fourteen, you do things with the military. And why not make all of the leave and everything the same as military, when somebody goes to the military? It wouldn't count.
I'm not running a boot camp.
I want to save the rest of the vacation that I'm going to lose.
You already lost.
Huh?
You already lost.
See, it got so busy last fall that I didn't get to take, you wouldn't let me take the time off I wanted to take off, and I lost it. My job's a little different than most of them, my phone calls come twenty-four hours a day. And I didn't get to take it off, and I lost it.
And that is something I was going to discuss with you guys, because he earns vacation time at a wonderful amount of sixteen hours a month, so that's a lot of vacation time to go through, and I, with the changes that I implemented for the vacation time, it's stair-stepped for the carryover, and it's not, because current, the current handbook reads that the amount to be carried over is the amount that you can earn plus the five days, and that is where the problems started. So, I changed it to where it's all in the graph, and everyone has the numbers right there in the graph that they are allowed to carry over. The numbers in front of you is just an updated, um, like compensation package, the caper's amount went up from eight point something to nine point three nine. Um, Jeff changed a little bit this year because he is working after retirement, so the first twenty-five thousand dollars of his pay is at eight point, not in there, eight point six. Yeah. And then after that, it's thirty percent, and it's completely employer-paid since he's working after retirement. So, that was one change that, that hit us this year that we weren't really prepared for, but not a big deal, but I just wanted to update that because there have been some changes with people's wages and all of that. The second sheet is the current overtime, comp time, and year-to-date totals with people using their overtime pay, their comp. And I broke up the comp a little bit different just to, to kind of give everyone a viewpoint, you know, I started at the beginning balance of the year, how much they've earned in eighteen and how much they've used in eighteen, and then gave you the liability of each of those totals. Because to me, it's not just what they currently have, I mean, because any employee can be done at any point in time, and we have to be liable for that. So, I wanted to give you guys the viewpoint of at any point in time on that, and then, like, the year-to-date totals are like all of the overtime and comp time, and then your back page is the vacation and sick leave balances and liabilities. And that is, I had to have the discussion with Jeff, what they, what they vacation carry over, that is his actual amount. So, those are just numbers that I knew, I knew we had, uh.
Makes me happy to see it.
It needed updated and with the handbook, and I knew I had someone opposing with the comp time stuff, so I just had everything ready for you.
We have about thirty-six thousand dollars of vacation and sick leave. Pretty sure that's, it's just looking roughly.
Thirty-two seven hundred.
Thirty-two seven hundred.
Thirty-two seven nineteen, maybe a ten?
Thirty-two seven nineteen.
That's a change.
Had some change, not to be exact. Approximately.
And I know, I know you're against it all, but, I mean, the employee, we sat down, the employees are very much wanting their comp time. And the way it reads now is there's a limit on it.
I would say that, you know, we had, the handbook committee met, we reviewed, we came back because, uh, we had taken out comp completely, and we were going, we were going to go with overtime, and because we had seen issues with people coming to us saying they're not making enough money, well, that was our thought, well, let's make sure they're taking that overtime, and we won't have that issue, but had an, I think you all had, uh, the concern raised to you, or at least most of you did, about the comp time, so committee met back and just kind of clarified that policy to cap it at forty, but to be able to spend it and earn it back, I had originally put it in as earn a max of five days of comp time per year per employee, but we changed it to be able to spend it and earn it back, but no more than forty, so that our liability at the end of the year would be to only pay out forty hours. So, that's kind of where this policy is at this point. So, I don't know what council would like.
You ban those forty hours of time and a half, correct?
No, that's, that's.
Longer's that, forty hours.
It'll go in. It's not forty hours of overtime, it's, it's forty hours of comp time, so that would.
It's figured, it's already converted.
It's converted already.
It's already converted.
Yes, converted time.
You know, the people who've spoken to me are under the misoppression that maybe their paychecks aren't as big, and that's just because of the way they've set up their holding. Because at the end of the year, they're not putting somebody into a higher tax bracket, they're not losing money by taking overtime.
They may lose it at their paycheck, but at the end of the year, they're going to get.
Just as much.
The difference is like two percent.
What was, what was communicated to me in the meeting that Jamie and I had with everybody was that they, they, they liked being able to have that option to take the overtime or be able to have the additional time off, so, of course, trying to be, you know, maybe fair in this situation, committee met to maybe think about it a little bit more and have the facts from the people that work for us and see what we can do, so that's what we had come up with, Jim, and counsel.
My only thing is, is I mean, I'm still not a hundred percent for comp time because I, I mean, the way of the world is you work overtime, you get paid for it, you go on down the road, you make more money.
Well, that's, that's also why we have vacation and sick benefits as well.
But, you know, I guess if it makes them happy, but once I start hearing complaining that, oh, we're not making enough money, you know, I'm all willing to go in and.
When you look back at this and you see how much has been taken.
Here's the thing, if you don't like it, you take your overtime, and we'll go that route, we'll do a way with comp time in the future.
These net, these numbers kind of, uh, blow my mind because, I don't know, I don't know why you'd.
It feels like some people are.
Time, you still got vacation, I mean, work.
Well, that's, that's going to be a change for them as well, because they're not going to, they can't carry over comp time. It's either used or it's paid out at the end of the year, but their vacation time is changed now to where they can't carry off, like someone that's been here less than five years, which is what?
Everybody.
Ninety-nine, except for me, I mean, everyone's new, so they can carry over forty hours. And until they hit the next mark, they're carrying over forty hours, unless it's otherwise approved by you guys.
And if they, if they want their comp time, they'll save it, and they have to use it before they can use vacation.
And they can't exceed forty hours.
What's the current comp time policy, taking, stuff in effect now?
I think it, I think it is limited, after, after we looked at it, Jeff and I were talking, was it the comp time limited to forty hours?
Yeah, we'd always understood it was limited to forty hours anyway. We did not realize that there had been, in the past, some that had gotten more than that, and then.
Three totals over.
Spin it, you know, we were always under the assumption forty hours was the max you could have.
Right, and then I have three.
And some guys would spend eight and build it back up, you know, or whatever, but they never got above that forty-hour threshold.
I'm still kind of in that boat of, of, you know, with the current policy that we proposed, limiting it to the five days total per year instead of being able to spend it, earn it back, and spend it, and earn it back, and, I don't know, what do you guys, what are your thoughts? I don't know, what do you guys, what are your thoughts? Do away with it, amend it?
I don't know, that's just personal experience.
You know, some of these guys, they get their vacation used during the summer when their kids are out of school, you know? And then come fall, they have very little time. Now, I haven't looked at it, this is the first time I'd seen it, but some of them will use that comp in the fall to go to a child's ballgame, you know, leave early on a Friday or a Thursday or whatever. Some of that stuff, take off on a Friday and go somewhere. I mean, I, I, it makes no difference to me, I can't have it. But I just know how the guys have used it in the past, so. But usually, they kind of know whether their paycheck's big enough or not, or whether they'll take it as overtime, or whether they got a little kickoff in the comp because they may want to leave and go somewhere one day that week or something, you know? So...
But another decision you guys are gonna have to make is the time you're gonna allow them to use it or lose it or pay it out. Like, we need to know if they have till the end of the year.
Right.
Because vacation is to use it or lose it, correct?
If you will, you know?
It is, whatever the issue is now. How, three years you're gonna put together, man, all this?
So, at that point, uh, if you approve this, you would need to allow them a certain amount of time to spend it out?
Well, you don't have that many people that has anything over forty.
There's three.
You, you would just, you would just treat it as if, as if they would be...
Our employees, we've got one that's over forty on comp time.
We're just starting to make money per year.
Even vacation, too.
Right.
Well, my understanding would be is that the, if you implement the policy now, that you would have till whatever the policy says. So, if it's year in, then it's year in.
Right. As a supervisor, I'm just saying, we're gonna have everyone trying to take off.
Sure.
Like, so we need to think about that.
But as far as...
You know what, because there's a ton of people that have vacation.
Vacation balances, vacation balances.
So, what is it, is that they can carry forty?
Most...
I'm not seeing people who are gonna take more than a week of vacation. Because if they can carry over the forty...
Jeff might be all, uh, but Jeff can also carry over a hundred and thirty-two hours.
Sure, that's what I'm saying with carry over.
Jeff can carry a hundred and...
Hundred and thirty-six.
Hundred and thirty-six?
Yeah. Which is seven, seven days.
So, relating to the issues that Jim has brought up, any, any discussion on that? Thoughts about changing those, commending that? Commending the policies, vacation and sick leave per comp? I do have a motion and a second on the table at this time. Yes, the board's in. Guys, we'll figure it here.
We're changing the draft? Is that what it is?
I have a, I have a motion, I have a motion and a second on the table to approve it.
I have it.
And I'm asking for any other discussion pertaining to what Jim has brought up.
Okay.
If the fellows want a yea or nay at revisiting once again?
We can.
Table is great.
These are the first times that I've seen these. I don't know. I could ask more anytime, but, you know, I'm very drawn to motion.
What? We'll draw the motion and table it.
What? I'm on the first over eight months, January twenty-three. It's hashed out, please.
I'll figure something out. I can't get an answer out of the table.
I'm, I'm at no vote, so you guys can do whatever you want.
I was trying to figure out how much we have to pay out if we just paid everybody that was over vacation now, right now. That was over their...
Over their forty?
As far as vacation or comp?
Two forty? Like, at the end of the year for their vacation or their comp?
If we pass this, what it would cost us if we just, everybody that was over however many hours they can carry over, or what the handbook said...
They wanted to pay out right now?
Right.
Over their forty?
Well, you got, well, I mean, one guy's got fifty-seven, one has twenty-four over his forty, another one has forty over his forty. It's vacation only, twenty over, fifty-seven over. I mean, the, quite honestly, the worst one that we're gonna have to pay out would be Jeff with fifty-seven, and he could carry it.
In which, in which you could, yeah, I mean, you could pass your policy.
Can we go to executive session to talk about that?
Right.
What about our motion and second on the table?
Can you withdraw his motion?
It's already been seconded. It's a motion owned by the law.
We can vote.
You know, it's only by the body, not by the person who made it.
So, what does that mean?
So, we can't withdraw it.
Well, so we can vote, let's see what they have to ask.
I call for a vote. So, we can vote and then we can amend the agenda, go to the executive sessions, that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't even remember what all the executive sessions are for, though, this is, this is a horrible...
Which I've crossed out. I've crossed out the ten-minute police department one, but we also have the one that Lisa...
Okay, let's vote on this one and...
Motion and a second on the table to approve the handbook. All in favor? All opposed? Three, four.
What, where?
Number four of the...
Number four of them.
You didn't vote, you didn't vote?
Yeah, he did, I got it.
You didn't, I didn't see your hand, put it up, okay. One, two, three, four.
Did not pass.
Did not pass.
Now, do you want to discuss this?
Again, that was just a pass it as it is.
Pass it as it is, yes.
That failed.
Right, because of the discussion.
The executive session, our request is five-minute executive session related to attorney-client privilege regarding a potential litigation or ongoing litigation. So, it's, uh, it's one need, why don't I say?
So, now we're back to the handbook. Do we need to...
And we get to this?
No. No, because I know...
Is that not what we do, get any executive session in?
Do you want to talk about that right now?
Yeah, I want to talk about it right now.
So, I'll make a motion and then amend it for five minutes.
Five-minute executive session, attorney-client privilege, motion.
And do all you want in there. Counsel.
I'm in.
All of us here at the table.
So, I could...
Motion and a second, senators. Born, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed, three, four, meeting room, reconvene at nine eleven. No action at this time has been taken.
You guys will do the handbook.
I want to remove compensatory time. I'm not voting. We have nine days a year of paid time off, that's thousand and eighty dollars for a fifteen-dollar an hour employee, a twenty-dollar an hour employee, puts it up there, equal amount. There, this is a hell of a package. There's nobody in industry that makes this kind of money, has that kind of time off, and then gets...
No one wants the jobs still.
I mean, this, this is, city jobs used to get a lot of benefits because of paying under the going wages. These wages at this level that we're paying now are above what you'd find anywhere else in this area.
Counsel's thoughts? At this time, I, I don't see as it would do any good to go back to committee as we've done both ways, but not present it to council. Council needs to make a call regarding this specific issue unless anyone has any other issues within the handbook that would like to be reviewed. But I would say that you need to make a call on, on this specific policy, um...
I think what, I think what I'd do is to have, have him make his motion and use this as a framework, the handbook as a framework, and, and motions to amend can be made, and if those are passed or rejected, they can pass the entire handbook.
So, we would, on the proposed, on the proposed handbook, we would be...
On, on the handbook that you've been providing.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got another issue, termination, two weeks' notice. You don't want somebody that you've terminated or has automatically terminated himself, other than somebody that's retiring at the end of thirty years and says, I want to retire and...
And most positions are asked to just be done.
Just turn in your keys and be done. Not, not give them two weeks. You have to want to pay them for two weeks, but mostly not.
In most situations, it's just been asked to be...
Yeah, I think, I think either two weeks termination, just, that's it. You turn, they quit, you fire them, whatever, turn in the keys, you're done. You're finished because it undermines morale and everything else. Now, if somebody is giving you notice that they want to retire at the end of the year, and that's a whole totally different circumstance than what...
Do I need to change the wording?
I, I would...
I mean, if you terminate somebody that's...
Well, this is, this is, this, in here, it talks about somebody quitting and thinking for two weeks. Give them two weeks' notice.
Don't, we still have the authority, I mean, we still have the authority to say no.
When they offer it, we can say immediately.
Yeah.
We need their vacation time, their vacation time.
Right, and we still pay that out, it's, it's earned, it's owed.
The way it's written, it's kind of at their option. I would remove it not to their, I would leave it at their option.
Well, it's not really their option if we're telling them no.
But if they're giving you two weeks' notice that they quit, that's their option. Unless you, unless you say it's our policy, there is no two weeks. If you quit, it's right now.
I agree with that, and I mean, the last two weeks that they are there, they can lose their motivation, they can tinker things to where it makes it harder for the next person and it's...
They can tell everybody what a bad guy the boss is or whatever, you know? They're, they're quitting, they're quitting for a reason.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to think about how to do this because you also don't want, you also may, well, history doesn't show us that the city's not quick to hire people, but the idea is that you might have something to train the next employee. I don't think that's happened since I started here. I mean, the point of the two weeks is to give the city notice of the person leaving so the city can prepare. The person doesn't have to give two weeks and the city does the best plan except two weeks because everybody's one employee.
Right.
So, the way it's worded now is still covered because it's at-will employees, is what you're saying? I'm hearing you.
It shouldn't be giving anybody more rights than they otherwise have.
Which section?
Yeah, page twenty-seven, you have a residency requirement that your employees of the city, I don't think that's a letdown, Lester.
Um, I think every, a lot of cities use it, point seven.
For essential employees, employees' power, et cetera, probably is, but for non-essential street employees, I don't think that withstands.
I mean, it goes back to the, you have an at-will employee, and the problem's gonna occur when you're giving some people, uh, more talent in the front housing because of housing issues, but not giving other people on fires. And then, if you're not giving one gender and you're giving the other gender, that's when you're gonna start to trouble.
Aw, this is all girls.
The main reason for the residency is that we have a thirty-minute call, and we're like, guys out, and all the jobs are thirty minutes in the first season. And all my guys are on call. At different times.
I think he's looking at such an eye.
Yeah, no, I mean, everybody. Every guy I got's on call at one time or another.
Let's do this, if I can make a suggestion, is that, uh, when was the council's thought on starting this? Are we gonna start this like a January one type thing? Are we gonna start it September one, do the last quarter of this year? Any thoughts?
I'm gonna say January one. No, I was under the impression we were gonna start it in January, but...
And, and let's do this then, why don't individual council members send me their concern or get their concern to Jamie? Would that be easiest of the two?
Yeah.
And that way, those concerns then can be shared for the next council meeting, that what everybody's got a chance to think about, read the language.
I thought that's what our committee was forced to...
And how that works if the current handbook reached different with the vacation carryover?
Well, you expected me to follow in line.
Are we gonna have to follow the, like, we'll have to follow the current handbook and have, you know what I mean, if it's January one?
If, if, for example, it says that employee X gets to carry over ten days and the new handbook says that employee X gets to carry over five days, that employee gets to carry those ten days over into the next year, but then, we'll maybe be able to carry whatever the new employee says.
Because the, the new policy will pick up, so they'll have to spend it down.
So, they'll get a little vacation time, they'll have to use it.
Okay. So, they won't get jacked at this point, and it'll just give them time.
They're not gonna lose, keep my property, right? As long as I can spend it, I won't lose my vacation this year.
Is that correct?
You can't lose it anymore.
Would it be appropriate to say, maybe do an actual handbook workshop with the council? Just act, I mean...
I mean, it's open.
Right, I mean, so a special meeting to address specifically the handbook, so we can all sit down and go through what those concerns are instead of, yeah, like a budget meeting instead of eating up hours of time to, to discuss what obviously there were some concerns. Council will be open to doing that.
Could, could we get an idea of the sections that each member is concerned about, some things kind of...
I could tell you what mine are.
Right. I would say get, if we all want to meet together and go through it one time and finalize it as a whole, I'd find...
I think that might be the better idea is to get with John...
Instead of sitting here for three hours and writing everybody else up.
I would, I would say to get, uh, John, your concerns by, um, end of week so that we could maybe have a special meeting this next week, beginning of next week, uh, depending on what availability is.
Or just do it the next calendar week.
Well, I'm saying, because...
We've, we've got everything.
Right.
I'm just the way that you understand it, yes. Definitely will.
Tim, what, Ryan?
I'm all right, just leaving it the way it is. Yep, comp time.
It's okay, we can disagree.
I can hear a motion or I can, we can table, we can do, what do we want to do?
I've spent...
I'm just thinking how many times I've...
Three of us.
You've looked at it for...
Three of us have spent a lot of time.
Committee, we have, along with John and Jamie.
We've had it thrown down, we've put it back in, we've set limitations on it. I'm still not for comp time, but...
I think we've met a fair agree, agreeable between our employees.
It's a lot better than what it was in the past.
Right.
And if something's not being done the way that you intend for it to be done, it can always, like, a section can be amended. So, we're not changing, I mean, this was the overhaul of making things, make sure that they're going correct.
I mean, in six months down the road, if we don't like it, we can amend it.
Correct.
After re, after reading everything that I, I saw, I, I had no problem with any of it. And I understand where Jim's coming from, but I didn't have a problem with any of it. Uh, and if we can make amendments to the whole thing, then I've moved that we accept the, uh, handbook as is and we can make amendments at a later date.
I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion and a second to approve...
To, to, to be effective when, I don't know what that...
To be effective when? January one?
Let's, let's do January. I would say January.
Okay, motion to accept the handbook to take effect January one, two thousand and nineteen, a second. That's Brian and Christie. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries three, one, abstains. See as abstained.
I want this attached to this. And then, what's your plan on getting it signed and approved by each of the employees?
We were going to host a...
I have until January, yeah.
We were gonna host a workshop as far as pay and compensation and go over it. The handbook with them was my understanding. So, we can do that. I would say closer to end of year or maybe have an initial meeting to say, here it is, we're going to go over it.
Because if they submit that long, sign it, and then they'll do it.
That what?
That long sign in sixty-six.
Okay, uh, next item, Rhodes, what do we got, where are we at on that?
We haven't done anything, if that's what you want to do. We're still trying to get the phasing and stuff at the grocery store.
And then, as far as Phil goes, I was under the impression he was supposed to come speak to us.
I got a text. Yeah, he is. From Bill today, and he said he was not going to be able to make the meeting. He thought it needed to be engineered, and he was not going to open that kettle of worms himself.
And I think kind of what we decided was, we would shoot it and look at it, see what kind of drainage we got in the triangle from there.
Okay.
We're trying to get the phase-in done on the, on the circuit around the grocery store. As soon as they allow us to shut it down for three or four hours on a Saturday morning, get it done, we're going to get the road stuff taken care of. But we thought we were going to do it last weekend, they had some stuff coming in Monday, they wouldn't let us do it, so.
Counsel.
Leave it on the agenda so we don't forget about it.
Leave it on the agenda.
Yeah, and he said that was on Southwest Road, in the fifth street.
Right.
Okay, all right, very good. No other old business, move on to new business, grocery store payment. Thank you for being patient, Carolyn.
I, I don't know if you need me to say anything, or.
John, Jamie.
Basically, Carolyn is calling, it's going to be time to get the payment going, so we need to figure out how, when, where, and all of that.
It's kind of already laid out in the development agreement, I guess I'm just, you know, it doesn't have to be done, like, right now, but we're getting close, so.
Well, it can't be done until it's operational in the agreement. And then, is it?
It's quarterly, so I don't know, it's fifty thousand, I hope you guys don't do twelve-five quarterly.
Yeah, the discussion at the time was kind of like, what if we don't have enough, you know, accumulation to make the payment, and so that's why it was set out.
Can we do the quarterly? Can we do it as a lump sum for the year payment? What can, I mean, is there something in there restricting us from? What are our obligations under that?
No, I mean, not necessarily.
Our obligations was fifty thousand a year unless we did it.
But can we do it as twelve-five? Or do it as a lump fifty for the year?
It's kind of, if, so if you come in under fifty thousand dollars a year, it's kind of whatever you raised.
Sure.
So, you could do it fifty thousand dollars and not wait till the following year. But if the city, something happened in the city, though, and you're strapped for cash, I have a question.
Gotcha.
Pay that fifty thousand dollars if you want, or if you just want to do the twelve thousand five hundred.
As a quarterly payment?
As a quarterly payment.
Okay.
Well, the, the question that, so your fiscal year starts.
Yes, it's January.
January one, so I just, September's next, beginning of fiscal year, but you guys have to be open on October.
In fact, grand opening October tenth, you're all invited.
So, so then the question is, though, like, maybe Carolyn can speak with the leads about this, is, is, do you guys consider operational, operational that quarter? Start the September, I mean, you committed a ten-year, so the question is, do you want to start that ten-year period September one, or do you want to start that?
Well, we need to get it started since we can't, we're trying to have, we have to vote on it.
Right.
I, I mean, if we can make a quarterly payment this year, I'd just make at least a quarterly payment.
So, so here's my other reason, is, is if, if the tax is done, and you don't, aren't accumulating fifty thousand dollars a year, and you're down to whatever we generate, if we're not generating fully, then, so, this is not good news to you then.
I see. Because we're expecting ten full years, and because it started a year late, it could be just nine years.
Yeah. See what I'm saying? That last year, you're not generating, you don't have a.
If it doesn't get renewed.
But, but I mean, everybody's, everybody's playing on the same team here, so.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, is if it's not there.
It's only half a million if we can, if we can generate it off the one percent.
Right, right.
And that was my whole thing, when we went back to pulling sixteen thousand out of that account.
Exactly, right.
I mean, there's a big difference there of, I mean, right now, we're sitting with two years of rent for five, fifty thousand dollars to them, and the extra.
Which, it's, for what it's worth, that's not two full years of accumulation, so I guess I take that as a good sign that.
Right, right, it's not two full years, but at the end of this year, it'd be almost two years.
So I guess.
Right.
Yes, although, wasn't there even a phase-in period of the first quarter of two thousand seventeen, so.
Hold harmless on the collection.
Yeah. Where, where is that money?
One percent sales tax.
I know, where it is, is it drawing money? Are we making money on it? Why don't we put it someplace where we're making money on it? Put it in an account where we make money.
But you'd have to have an account that you don't get dinged on if you pull it from, if you have to use it.
And we just reduce the five million accounts that we have? I'm not, I'm not really for opening up another account right now. I just condensed everything.
I mean, I don't know if you're going to make all that much money on any of that.
Is this, is, is this affecting? Does this affect the interest rate or interest that's accumulating by starting that quarter versus the next? You've got credit?
You mean, as in, are we paying, is the interest rate clicking right now?
Right.
Um, it is not as of today, but it will be as of, like, ten days from now.
So in ten days, you're going to start paying interest on the borrowed money?
Right. And, um, I don't know how much, you want to give the details of it, but we'll have two different, um, two different loans. One of them is a zero-interest loan for ten years. The trade-off with that is that the cash, you know, you're paying it over a shorter period of time, so that's, that's really a lot of what we kind of got this one year marked for, is that. Then there's the TIF, which we could also talk about that. I've asked the attorneys what we need to do to actually technically, you know, finalize that and start that mechanism. And I don't know that I've gotten a full response, but we will have to, on our end, certify that we actually incurred the expenses we said we were going to that are eligible for the, the TIF. And then, do you get taxes broken out by, like, you get stuff from the state that shows that this is in a different collection district than other sales tax?
Sure.
I've never, I've never dealt with a TIF, so I don't know.
None of us have, but I mean, I think that that, I think it will be that it is remitted to you in some identifiable way, I hope it, we've set that up correctly so that it is, and then, um, you'll just pass that through to our lender. Actually, I don't know that it's terribly prescribed, whether you pass it through to our lender or you pass it through to us, but, you know, it's fine with me that you.
They go from the state to the lender.
Well, that's not what, okay. I don't know that I got a great, great answer, and I'm fine with that if it doesn't go to us directly.
And whatever way we need, whatever way we need to do it, we'll do it.
But, you know, that will, that collection should start in October, so, and it should be a monthly remittance of tax, so.
I mean, the fact of the matter is that everybody's kind of playing on the same team here, so.
Would you prefer to have a quarterly payment this year yet? Or?
My question is, how much and when you go with it?
Do you want a quarter, or do you want a first fifty thousand dollars this year? I mean, I, I can give fifty thousand, we've already saved it for this year, we had actually planned on paying it this year, so I'm fine with that.
Would that be good to make it match the ten-year term?
Well, we're only out one year after that, I mean, in our ten years that we're obligated to it.
She's saying she's only been in operation for possibly three months.
The day, the, October tenth, the opening day, we've got to check for fifty grand, I don't care. That takes care of one year off of the ten years we owe it.
Or even, or even if we're making a payment within the last quarter of the year.
You could just say you're making the second, making the payment for this year, for, I guess, starting the second quarter, so July one. You're, you're, you're saying that this payment is for the entire year, but we meant to make it to you that July one, so that starts the ten years.
Right.
And you just make it July one of each year? And you have enough overlap in accumulation, that should be, if it is a problem, you just go back to twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
I mean, I'm fine with making the forty thousand dollars.
Wherever you make the payment, you're still going to have a year, a full year before you make another payment.
Well, the thing is, is we can make it one quarter payment next year, the first three months, at the end of three months or whatever, we can make that quarter payment, if that's all we felt comfortable doing, if we've seen that we weren't.
Right, for some reason, they're not generating them.
Because I'm, I don't know if your notes are lump sum payments, or monthly payments, or pay as you go, or as you can, or, I mean, I don't know.
They're monthly, they'll set it, they'll, they'll be set up monthly. But we just, some of the cash flow is not finite, you know? It, it will be dependent on how much business is there, so I just am conscious of managing cash flow, especially at the beginning.
I mean, I'm fine with that, as, as soon as it opens, we make a payment fifty thousand.
That's, that's the way I look at it. I'd rather just make the full payment. Exactly, that's what I'd like to do, just make the one fifty thousand payment, that's.
And then we would only have to be worried about maybe not being able to pay one year.
There you go, counsel, counsel can present the check at the grand opening.
There you go.
There you go, Marshall.
That's a good play, well played.
It'd be a part of your, your opening festivities, you're trying to make a big statement with the opening festivities, so there you go, counsel could be there to present, if that works.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Bingo!
Yeah.
Shh, don't tell them that. Is that, we need a call, a motion on that? We need consensus on that?
I think because it's, it's, I think we, because it's not on like a quarterly date, if that's what you want to do, I mean, you say that it's fifty thousand dollars a year, it'll be a quarterly payment, but you're just wanting to get fifty thousand, so you're thinking the minutes need to reflect that you're intending that to be the entire year's payment.
That's what, yeah. Fifty thousand for this whole entire year, October tenth.
Both two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, right? What are you considering?
Oh.
I'm saying for this whole year.
You're saying for the two thousand eighteen year, you're.
For January one to December thirty-one.
Come out of the one percent sales tax. That way, next year, we start out fresh.
Right.
If we want to make a quarterly payment, we can do it. What I'm saying is pay twenty eighteen fifty thousand.
Instead of the one quarter.
And twenty nineteen, we're going to pay them another fifty thousand.
You're not going to come back in nine and a half years and say, after they've made five hundred thousand dollars with the payment, say, well, we still have.
We're, we're committed for ten years, we're committed to ten years.
We just don't, we just don't know if it's, if the one percent is going to continue.
I mean, in less than two years, we've got a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. I don't think it's going to. But that's why I'm saying, we're, we're only, if we, if we pay twenty eighteen fifty thousand, you only have to worry about. Yeah, we've only got one year that we haven't, you know, we can collect.
Yeah, but the, the thing is, you're not, it's, this is more of a temporal contract, which is fifty thousand dollars a year for ten years, it's not necessarily that we're committing to five hundred thousand dollars. And so my concern is, you say that, you, you, the motion is then, because this, technically, this will start until it's operational, you're having an overlap of about six months, you're creating a ten and a half year, and maybe I'm overanalyzing this too much.
I think you're overanalyzing it.
Or out of the ten-year contract.
What I'm saying is, we're paying one year out of that ten-year contract for the twenty eighteen year.
Would this be helpful? It might actually be useful for our auditor to, to have in, well, for example, you know, the Odd Fellows have, have pledged a ten-year commitment as well, but we don't have it anywhere in writing, and we need to, like, get it in writing in simple terms, what they have in plan to do. Would it be helpful if whatever we come up with here, we just simple one page, write it out, and we've got it for the files to make sure that there's not missing documentation nine and a half years from now?
If it's documented in the minutes that we're paying twenty eighteen fifty thousand dollars for the grocery store, as a first year payment.
Exide payment on the debts, the city of Port St. John has gone ahead and considers that the agreement started on the first, January first, two thousand eighteen, and this is the fifty thousand dollar payment, reflects the first year of the contribution under the development agreement, and I can do that between now and October tenth. If that's how you guys want to do it.
I'd like to just keep it as simple as our fiscal year, we pay him fifty thousand, and we pay him fifty thousand for this year, get a jump on it.
If they accept the check, then they've accepted the terms.
I don't think they're not going to accept it. I'm pretty sure they're probably.
And then we'll start paying quarterly in nineteen.
What do you mean, John?
No, a motion, a motion to go ahead and pay, a motion to you, to pay the two thousand eighteen fiscal year contribution under the development agreement on.
Ending opening day, will that be appropriate?
October tenth or.
October tenth, does it?
Second.
It could be the fifteenth or the twentieth, whichever, so, okay. Opening day?
That's what, yeah.
Okay. So whatever opening day it ends up being.
Okay, so, yeah, it's October tenth, we really kind of put that in the motion. So for what it's worth, we're going to do a ribbon cutting ceremony in the morning. And we'll, I think we're going to have it lined up that those who have been a part of developing this can have some, we'll actually kind of set up a little bit of speaking time before the ribbon cutting. So we welcome your participation, the mayor or any other designated city.
I'll be there, but I would rather not speak.
Okay. So, anyway, we have, I mean, actually, the two Congressmen, Senator Bryan and Congressman Estes, have both said they would like to come, now whether their schedule actually ends up allowing them, but they both kind of have a meeting in four or two, so I think we'll kind of have, I don't know, a bit of an event, light lunch following in the community room, which is one of the features of the store. Eagle Radio is going to do live coverage from what I can, from what I.
Aside from my.
Aerial duties.
Do what?
From your aerial duties.
Separate, that's, that's, that's a different deal.
Forty-five minutes of session, essentially.
I do have, I do have a motion on the table. And a second, where's the second, you? Motion and a second, Sanders, Brian, to approve the payment for twenty eighteen, the entire year of twenty eighteen, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars on opening day for the one percent sales tax grocery store payment. Any other discussion? Is that correct? Is that what you wanted?
Yes.
Very good. All in favor? All opposed, Carrie's five oh.
You both?
Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn, appreciate it.
Get him a Life Love sticker.
I just thought it was another gesture.
This is John.
We do the executive sessions in department, so if all of them are in the same department, what's he doing?
Uh, the two. The B, B is out, that is out, the ten-minute, higher police department.
I don't know if we even need yours.
John, the, the ten-minute discuss attorney. I don't think we did that. So A and B are out, we have two that could be handled with, with Jeff on the two employees.
Could be handled in five minutes for both of them.
Well, yeah, that's the thing, I don't, I, I, I really don't want to have the one five-minute anyway because the person, or the supervisor's not here.
So.
So I don't want that one, but I want the, I would like the other one, because I'd like, I'd like to have the supervisor here. You told me the supervisor was going to be here.
He did.
You did.
I did not.
We were sitting in the truck the other day, you said I will have him.
I told you I would take care of it. He and I never discussed it.
Okay, well, that's different from what I was told, that's okay.
So we just need one five-minute with Jeff?
Yeah, that'd be fun. So we'll have a five.
And a ten.
And a ten. Okay, which one are you going to do first?
Jeff.
I don't care.
Put all you need in there.
Just you guys.
Counsel and attorney, mayor.
Yep.
Make a motion for a five-minute executive session, discuss personnel matters with non-elected personnel.
Meeting will reconvene there at nine forty-eight. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Meeting called back order at nine fifty, no action has been taken at this time. Entertain a motion to go back into executive session for five minutes.
Make a motion, we go back to executive session, discuss personnel matters, non-elected personnel.
Motion on the table?
Start it.
Take your pick.
Take your pick.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting will reconvene at nine fifty-six.
Yeah.
Call meeting back order at nine fifty-six. No action taken at this time, but we have a motion.
I'd make a motion to raise. I'd make a motion to raise Cody Hoy from fifteen thirty an hour to fifteen fifty an hour, and Dale Thomas from twelve sixty-eight to thirteen eighteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, Sanders, Bryant. For Cody Hoy and Dale Thomas, move to fifteen fifty to thirteen eighteen, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, Carrie's five-oh.
Thank you very much.
One hundred percent, yeah. Okay, one last executive session here on the list for the evening.
You'll make a five-minute executive session for non-elected personnel.
Discuss personnel matters to include?
Or employee performance.
Oh, employee performance, yes, okay.
To include a counsel, mayor, attorney.
Employee, you need the employee note, okay. Second, motion and a second, C is Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Back at nine ten.
Ten, ten oh three? There he is. Call meeting back to order at ten oh four, no action has been taken at this time.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to add another five-minute executive session.
Second.
To discuss one personnel matters.
Yep.
Non-elected personnel. Non-elected personnel. To include counsel, mayor, attorney, and Bill.
Second.
Motion and a second, Sanders and Bryant, all in favor? Opposed, Carrie's-
I think it's the last thing.
We'll reconvene.
Not enough.
Ten, twelve. Can't raise the bar? Call meeting back to order at ten eleven, no action being taken at this time with that executive session. At this time, can I make the recommendation, or do I need?
No, go ahead, do it. Gary, Will?
Or do I need a?
Do an agenda?
Just amend the agenda, do it.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to accept.
Add another, another-
That's not executive session, but it's appointment.
Add an item, or meet the mayor's position.
Second.
Motion and a second on the table to add an agenda item, and appointing a member of the police department under the mayor's section. Motion and second, all in favor? All opposed, Carrie's five-oh. Mayor's report, at this time, I would like to, as acting department head over the police department, recommend that William Elliott, our officer here, to be promoted from officer to the sergeant, to look at the pay at the following council meeting, and that's, that's what I have, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ryan, Sanders. Any other discussion?
What, Harson?
We can't change his favor now.
I'd like to look at the policy first, our pay schedule, and then we can-
I think we're retroactive.
Right, just retroactive, we'll do it retroactive next meeting. Okay, yeah, I didn't, I was gonna try to grab, but I couldn't. Okay. Motion and second, all in favor? All opposed, Carrie's five-oh. No other business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second, C is Sanders, any other discussion, all in favor? All opposed, that carries five-oh.
Wow, I just said wow.